Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Trinidad. Before we stand for the plates, will you all make sure that your cell phones are muted or off? And for all the males to remove any hats, please. So, please remove your hats. I just announced, sir, that you're to remove your hat.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If you all could stand for the flag. If you have the flag, would you still remain standing?
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please read. Guys, I'm sure. Thank you for standing. I would like to make a few words about a friend and a former city councilman, Anthony Mateh, who passed away Friday. He was, he and his family were treasured members of this community for maybe ten years. Anthony himself was very involved, first with school board, then with city council. He started his stint on city council in July of 2012. And he was here, re-elected twice, re-elected on the special election and re-elected twice until May of 2020, when he resigned to take, to move with his family to Trinidad. Mike, Anthony was a very eloquent member of city council. He was very vested in this community, and he wanted to do whatever was right. So I ask that you keep him, his wife Lucille, his children and grandchildren in your prayers this week, and may he rest in peace. Thank you. Work on. Tavanna?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trinell?
Here.
Ogultry?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Greego. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any correctional additions to the agenda? Yeah, I got the motion to approve the agenda as listed. Shu, the motion is Sarah's second.
Second.
Nice to have you back.
Call the vote, please.
Tavanna?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Greego. Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. We don't have anything tonight, I think. Item four, petitions or communications for oral review. I'd like, because there's so many of you here tonight, and so many new members, new people here, I'd like to remind you of the ground rules. The public comment section offers an opportunity for any citizen to express opinions or ask questions regarding city services, policies, or other matters of community concern, and any agenda items that are not part of a schedule of the people here. Those wishing to speak must sign in no later than 6:00 p.m. Citizens will have five minutes for comments. The sign-in limit was established to provide efficiency in the conduct of the meeting and to allow equal opportunity for everyone wishing to speak. An immediate response should not be expected. As issues are typically referred to city staff for follow-up or research and are then reported back to council, the individual who initiated the comment or inquiry, written materials for presentation to council must be submitted to the city clerk as the speaker approaches the podium.
What do you want to say, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As, this is written here, if the public comments are relating to...
Correct. Okay. Thank you. I'm looking at here. I'm looking at the subject. I can't read. I have only two comments that are not about homelessness in Trinidad. I would like to remind you that as I read prior to the meeting, if the subject is pertaining to a public hearing, you have the opportunity either to speak then or speak now. There's so many of you, if you want to, however you want to do it, you'll all be heard. Trust me, you'll all be heard. But I think it's more, my opinion, it's more appropriate to do it during a public hearing as listed on the agenda that you do, whatever. I have two items. David Sampson, Mount Carmel Helping Hands Food Pantry, are you part of the homeless party? Or do you want to talk about Mount Carmel?
He was speaking.
David?
I'm here, council members. I didn't mean to walk into the horns next to that, but actually I had some vision from Mount Carmel. Yeah, the cooperation with Helping Hands, we're going to do the local food pantry, starting in October on the first Friday out of the playgrounds. This is in addition to what we already do out of the playgrounds on the third Wednesday. So I was wanting to make that known and then just pass out a little handout to which you guys know some of the things that we do.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's right. Tom Mark, Tom Marcus, also known as Thomas Murphy.
All the others are speaking?
We're going to do the miscellaneous first, and then we're going to tackle the other.
I thought I had a lot of time. Still wet from getting a shower.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. I didn't know you were going to make that announcement, but Anthony signed a little stunt.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. No one was more eloquent of her boasts than, God love him, as he sat there and spoke. People that didn't know need to know that as a law enforcement officer, he took a lot of the time to contemplate the passing of the marijuana. And I can remember him going into great deal of depth and length of why he made the decision he did, so God bless him. He considered him a friend, and it's kind of deflated some of what I had to say. But anyway, congratulations to the people that are running, Danny and Si, and the people, you guys that sit here know, it's not an easy position to be in. You catch a lot of flak. So, but we need more people that are willing to do it, so congratulations. It's my goal, as I stated a couple months ago, to begin my interviews as soon as possible. It's my opinion that once the mail-in ballots come out, the election's pretty much over. So if you're not hitting it hard in September, I think the election fundamentally is over by the time the mail-in ballots come out. So if you're running for office, hit it hard this month and let people know that you can run. So, Danny and Si, I'd like to interview as soon as possible. What I'm going to do is I'm going to do just one-on-one interviews, and then with the mayor candidates, it's just two, I'll probably release that as soon as I can. And then I'll make sure that I interview everybody and then release them, so that's fair. I don't think there's going to be a meet the candidates that I know that this year, the chamber used to do that. I did it once. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work that's hard to do, especially if you have everybody in the same room and they can hear the questions ahead of time. It really kind of skews, you know, the program itself. On the takeoff, on what Tara was talking about, all the celebrations that have come up, I just, as I was sitting over at the last meeting, I just want people to know, the Chappelle House was built in 1886, so next year it's our 140th anniversary. And we actually have it documented, the Martin Murphy funeral, as a couple of previous things, next year it'll be 125th anniversary. And I'm starting to be the old guy in the room, which is kind of bothersome, but it's worth celebrating. So when everybody else is celebrating, we have some things planned for that, too. So, anyway, Karen, thank you for what you've done. I know it, sometimes I bet these two years have seemed like they were never going to end, and sometimes I bet you're going to look back and it's one monument, you know, really quickly. So, but you're the right person at the right time, and thank you for that. And for the people behind me that signed up, if any of them are candidates, you know, if you're ready, it's going to be fun. But it's important in our society, and God bless Anthony yet. I wasn't expecting it, didn't know. Just, nobody could make, the meetings have gotten shorter since he's been gone. So we still would understand that, you know, the joke, so, but really, God bless him. He did a lot for this community.
Yes, he did.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Erica Gonzalez, this subject matter kind of mails into the other. Are you, do you want to speak?
I'm with the Coalition for the Unhoused. I'll go after Pastor Clay.
Okay. All right. So, as I mentioned before, you can either speak now or wait until the hearing ends speak. So the first one to sign up for, to speak is Clay Mason.
Would I start? What was the name of the gentleman?
Anthony Mateh.
Okay, I will further keep them in my purse.
Please do.
Council members, my name.
Can you please just move the microphone up towards you? You project very well, just look at that thing. Thank you.
You're a creature, bro.
I'm sorry. I'm too, I'm sorry.
The mic, I think it's a pity you didn't hear it.
You know, somebody told me the other day, raisins aren't right in your shirt. As you know, my name is Clay Mason. I wear many hats in this community, as pastor of the Mission of the Way, as president of the Trinidad Ministerial Alliance, co-chair of the Coalition for the Unhoused in Los Anamos and Orphanoe Counties, member and training to be a trainer for the Coalition of Hope in Los Anamos and Orphanoe Counties, and I am director of the Way Home. But tonight I come to you simply as a neighbor and a follower of Jesus, a servant of a servant king. Good old define social justice as this, the view that everyone deserves equal economic, political, and social rights and opportunities. It's the ideal of creating a fair and just society where all individuals are valued, supported, and treated with dignity. That definition matters, because tonight you are deciding whether our city's policies will move us towards that vision or away from it. Homelessness is not an abstraction. It is veterans, mothers, fathers, young people fleeing abuse, people made in the image of God, people who deserve dignity, and yet this ordinance seeks to drive them from public spaces, to make it effectively illegal to rest, to sleep, even to exist in our city parks. Yes, such laws may be legal, but legality is never guaranteed reality. It was once legal to own slaves, to silence women by denying them the right to vote, to work children in factories. Every one of those laws in its day was legal, but they were unjust. Every one of them required someone to stand up and say, "This is wrong." As a follower of Jesus, I cannot ignore His words, "Love your neighbor as yourself," nor can I ignore Isaiah's warning, "Woe to those who make unjust laws, to those who issue oppressive decrees, to deprive the poor of their rights." And I cannot ignore Christ's own identification with the least of these. What we do or fail to do for them, He said we do to Him. So the question is simple. Are we loving our neighbors as ourselves when we tell them they cannot sit in the shade of a park tree, or lay under a blanket when they have no home? Or are we trampling on the poor and pushing them deeper into the shadows? I know the arguments you've been given, fiscal responsibility, legal liability, appearances, but none of those things make this ordinance just. Fiscal prudence may be wise, but it is not righteousness. Legal advice may be sound, but it is not mercy. And keeping the poor out of sight may feel convenient, but it is not love. True justice does not come by banishment. It comes by solutions, affordable housing, access to mental health care, addiction recovery, job training. We have opportunities to lead, not by exclusion, but by compassion. So council members, this decision is not just about a city code. It is about the moral direction of our community.
One minute, sir.
If you pass this ordinance, you risk banishing not only the poor from our parts, but you risk banishing Christ Himself. But if you reject it, you have the chance to show that Trinidad is a city that chooses mercy over exclusion, dignity over convenience, justice over legality alone. Joshua's words still echo, "Choose this day whom you will serve." As for me and my house, I will serve the Lord. I urge you to choose mercy, for as Scripture says, "Judgment will be without mercy to those who have shown no mercy." Thank you.
Please refrain from listening, please, the applause is quite enough. Erica Gonzalez, now, are you all going to speak on the same line, or is this...
Well, I'm a little unclear when the hearing is.
It's later this evening.
Later this evening.
It's earlier than that.
What do we think, the rest of the list? Are we speaking now or the hearing?
It's up to you. It's just that the hearing is set there, the public hearing is set, so you could speak before we broke. But if you prefer to do it, that's your right.
Yeah.
There's about 10 other speakers this evening. Her lack of available time, if it's the same thing that has been said before, would you please try to make your comments brief? And if not, we're going to, as the agenda goes, as the list goes down, we're going to have to start cutting them down to three minutes apiece.
All right. Well, I'm pretty agreed.
Okay. Go for it.
My name is Erica Gonzalez. I am the new systems coordinator for the Coalition for the Unhoused. So to clarify for people who may not know, the Coalition is a volunteer board. I'm the only staff member. Our territory is Los Anamos County and Orphanoe County. We are known as the Continuum of Care, which is our state's region for funding homelessness in Colorado. So I'm the only person, staff person working on that in two counties. I am here to stand with Pastor Clay and oppose the ordinance, because we know that there are solutions to this, and this is not one of them. So my request from you, as the new systems coordinator, is for city council to commit to creating, or to commit to a small group, a working group, with myself and some other Coalition members. We just want to work together and find better solutions than this ordinance. I pass out some updates. They're not glamorous, but they are very important updates for what we've been doing as a Coalition. We have created a coordinated entry system, which is a database. It's statewide, and that's how we can determine what the mode is and connect people with housing and other things. We are the only region in the state to not have a coordinated entry system. The southeast region, which is a little bigger than us, just created their coordinated entry system because they had to prioritize if housing, they just created a housing unit of supportive housing, and this is how they do it. It's how you know who your unhoused population is, how you know if what you're doing is working, and we are the last region in the state to have that. So that's an accomplishment that the Coalition has, and that I am spearheading, so I'd like some help with that. And I've been building relationships with people in both counties, and I want to build relationships with our city council, and our city government, and our county government. So I'm here to work together. I don't, I can't do this by myself, and this community is proof that we think that change is possible and that solutions are possible. So, be in touch.
Erica, did you want to speak now, or...
I prefer to speak now, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to the issue of homelessness in Trinidad. I'd like to take this opportunity to dispel some myths about homelessness. While teaching human services to eight inmates at the Trinidad Correctional Facility, we studied homelessness in depth. The first myth, a lot of folks think homelessness happens because somebody made bad choices or got hooked on drugs or alcohol. That's, that's not always the real story. Most of the time homelessness comes from bigger forces. Rent's going up while wages stay flat, families living paycheck to paycheck, an unexpected medical bill or car repair, a divorce, a mental health crisis, or a job loss. When safety nets like healthcare, foster care, and reentry programs aren't strong enough, people slip through the cracks. About drugs, it's easy to believe that people who are homeless because they're addicts. But in truth, a lot of people who end up on the street weren't using before they became homeless. What happens is this, once you're out there, your life is brutal. You're scared, you're exhausted, you're humiliated. Drugs can feel like the only way to cope for some people, something to numb the pain or help you to stay awake or stay safe. More often than not, drug use follows homelessness. It doesn't cause it. Then there's the toll it takes on your mind and your body, the stress, the sleepless nights, the constant fear of being roused at, robbed, or raped. It wears you down. When you're running empty, holding a steady job becomes almost impossible. Another myth about homelessness is that people just need to pull themselves up by their bootstraps and get a job. But try doing that while you're living in a tent near the river. You don't have a shower, clean clothes, or a place to shave, so you walk into the rain dirty, smelly, and unclean, and that's not a good look. And even if you do land a job, how do you keep it? No electricity or alarm clock, no way to store a uniform or rest. On top of that, you're miles from town in some cases, and with no reliable transportation. When we talk about solutions to homelessness, the first thing that comes up in these conversations is money. Let's look at where we're already spending money, because we haven't tackled homelessness. When people have nowhere to go, the city pays for it in other ways. Law enforcement ends up being the front line, called again and again to move people along and write citations, or handle situations that aren't really criminal matters. That's overtime hours of police resources that could be used elsewhere. Parks and public facilities get closed down, bathrooms locked, benches and tables removed, not because families don't need them, but because unhoused people are using them for survival. Then the city pays more for litter collection, more cleanup crews, more maintenance. Those are real dollars coming out of the same budget we plan to dite. Then there's the cost to our local merchants. When someone is hungry and broke, theft goes up, groceries, clothing, basic necessities. Shop owners shoulder the loss. They raise prices to cover it, and that ripple spreads to every paying customer in town. All of this happens because when people don't have a place of their own, they're forced into the middle of mainstream society. They're in the doorways, in the park, store aisles, and that constant friction creates tension and expense for the whole community. So the choice isn't whether we spend money or save money, we're already spending money, but in the most wasteful ways possible, through police calls, park closures, cleanups, and losses to our businesses. A housing-first approach doesn't create new costs so much as it redirects money while already burning on Band-Aids toward actual solutions.
One minute, sir.
Thank you.
The bottom line is this, it's not that we can't afford to act, it's that we can't afford to keep doing what we're doing right now. And with an economic recession looming, the problem will likely get even worse. At a church retreat, we were taught that a person's priorities are where they spend their time and money. And if we take a detailed look at the city's budget, I believe that most reasonable people would agree that few projects are more important than helping homeless people reclaim their lives, and helping to restore a greater sense of order and security for business owners and our families to use our public spaces. Thank you.
Lisa Regal, would you like to speak now, or...
I'd like to speak now. Hello, council. I'm Lisa Regal. I'm the pastor of Zion Lutheran Church, and I am also the vice president for the Trinidad Ministerial Alliance. And I would really like to appeal to all here who consider themselves believers in God. There's a verse I use when I consider making any decision that will impact other lives, and that verse is Micah 6:8. "He has shown you, O mortal, what it's good in, and what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk unweedy with him." And I've adopted that verse as my own personal motto in making decisions. Will this action or decision result in justice? Does it demonstrate mercy? Is it made in humility? I've had the privilege of standing beside Pastor Clay and Mary and their band of brothers and sisters in Christ, serving the homeless on Sundays. I have a short biblical message to share in the Lord's supper, and serve a meal like Mama used to make, and all are welcome. I'll point out that a lot of the people who show up are not unhoused. They're living on the fringes of society they can't make in speed. And once a week, a good man of God leads them in worship, reminds them that God loves them, and that they are worthy of that love. And I must admit, when I heard that their designated meeting place, their church, so to speak, had had the tables and benches removed, and they were now forced to worship and eat on the ground, I was appalled. Where was the mercy in that? Where's the justice in that? The unhoused and the poor are not a problem, they are people. People who are down on their luck, who may have made mistakes, may be fighting addiction and suffering from mental illness, but they have no other place to go. We take better care of stray dogs and cats in this community than we do before at the unhoused. We put stray dogs in shelters, and the city bulldozes and destroys the meager structures and belongings of people who have almost nothing. And now the city wants the waymen. And now the city wants the way ministry led by Pastor Clay, an organization that does what it can to minimize the misery of these least in our community, to require to get insurance and firm debts in order to provide a church service and a meal to the downtrodden? Where's the mercy in that? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Madeline Waddell. And I am a runner and a bicyclist and a dog owner. I got my dog here when I first moved here four years ago. A Noah's Ark, a new location. Um, so I spend a lot of time in our parks. I air every single day. I also play pickleball. So, um, I am very excited about the new courts. But just in terms of, um, my time, a lot of it is spent on the river, um, in the Boulevard area, um, Los Niños, um, and in Chino Park because I run over there. I have never had an issue with an unhoused person. I have never been disgusted by the trash issue. I have never had that deter me. I love this community and, um, I am here and here to stay because of the beautiful parks that this community has to offer. Um, so I'm very grateful that the council has been so supportive of expanding those, like through the pickleball courts, um, and through the expansion of the Boulevard area. I just think it is an amazing place to live and I'm really grateful. Um, I am also an attorney. I represent people who are indigent and cannot afford lawyers. Uh, and as part of my job, I'm often turning to Pastor Clay and people that he works with, um, in order to find my clients. Because, um, the unhoused situation here is extremely dispersed. Um, they have a really hard time finding services because they are up and down the park. Um, there's no centralized location for them to go. Um, and so Pastor Clay and Lana, um, and everyone they work with are often the people who know where they are and allow me to work with them to resolve their cases and, and continue the justice process, um, at the courthouse. Um, and so, uh, it, it is, um, just really disappointing to me that we would try to make it harder for someone like Pastor Clay to feed our unhoused population and our housed population that is living on the edge. Um, I've been down there many times, mostly to look for my clients, um, but also to be with him, um, and, um, and also obviously with my dog. Um, and so I, I just, um, this is a big issue for me because it is the melding of my two things that I'm really passionate about. Being on the river, being outside, and also helping people who can't eat, um, can't afford to eat by themselves. Um, and so I want to make sure that Pastor Clay is able to continue being on the river. He's not bothering me. And I know that sometimes, um, people can get scared or they don't like, um, there's some trash down there. Um, but putting a dollar amount, making Pastor Clay and other people pay to serve food is not the answer here. That's not gonna reduce the trash amount, that's just gonna spread it out more. Um, it's not gonna solve our homelessness problem. It's just gonna spread it out more and make it harder for people like me to be mired up. So I thank you for being on this council and serving, and I hope you do not pass this ordinance.
Scott Stoffer? Is that the correct pronunciation?
Yes, actually, first time in like ten years. I forget what my own name is sometimes. So, thank you all for having us. Um, and actually, more importantly, like I appreciate everybody on here who voted in and, and whatnot. But I also wanna give thanks to everybody else here. Without you, these meetings wouldn't really matter. So please keep showing up to the meetings, as many as you can. They need to hear it, we need to hear it, and it's important for everybody. Um, my name is Scott Stoffer. Excuse me, sorry, I'm a little traumatic. But I don't have. So, I appreciate this, and I wanna say that, um, I've traveled helping people with relationships with their dogs. I've seen a lot of mental health aspects from anybody, it doesn't matter. I've seen people that try to live the best life, but they can't afford food. And we know things are getting cut. To make other people pay for more stuff, to feed people that really truly need it. And it's very shameful for a lot of people to ask for that help when they see it and they see a community of people coming in to get their food. It helps save lives. To make somebody else have to pay for it just to get people to come over to feel safe is just wrong. It just feel, it's very wrong. And I hope you guys have to focus more on facts and financial and things like that. Somebody else said, we gotta think about what else are we paying for? Everybody else paying for? A lot of people do pay. One night I was, went to the bar, locked my keys in my car with my window down, just so that I couldn't get my forearm into it. Well, you know, the bar takes a lot of money. Couldn't get to my insurance card, so I didn't, and I looked around for help. I tried to get a steak, I tried to find something. The only people that were out to help, that I could ask for help for, was the people on the streets. Graciously, they got multiple people to not break my window and not cost me $250, which of course financially, that's, makes sense. And I've also had people as, as I'm out protesting, gratefully, very happily wanna call ICE on me. I'm like, why would they call ICE on me? I have more respect, I get, I get a lot, you get a lot more respect than just me walking around to announce this meeting was happening. People were very thankful. They were grateful that they knew this was going on, but they did not know what was going on. They don't really know a lot of the rules that everybody's making against them. They're not included. We get people, and I don't remember the name of it, um, everybody in these shirts, uh, Coalition for the Unhoused. They're the ones speaking for everybody else. I, I ask anybody, come hang out with them. Come see what the work is done, what the people need. Because you're not really gonna know unless you ask the people. I live in my van, I travel. I'm fortunate enough that I have backers. I get to go see family in California come through Colorado. I've been able to be, help people with their dogs throughout the country. The issue is everywhere. You're not any different. The same rules that they're trying to push in California by pushing it just down the road to the next county. Thankfully, there's land between every other county, but it's the next county to pick up. You have a strong community, a very strong community, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So, please, just go sit and ask the people you wanna make the laws for. And again, let them be included in it as well. And again, thank you all for joining. We need the people, period. We are the people. Preachers, pastors, artists, dog trainers, lawyers, thank you, I'm, we'll be finding you soon. Hell, you know. But everybody, everybody here, we need everybody. So with that, I said, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
The next one signed up, I'm sorry, I can't reach her hand, I'm, B-I-B-E-C-K. Is it? I don't know. I'm trying to get out. I'm sorry.
G-I-B-I-C-K?
Well, think about it, not so fast. What is it? Does anybody else can understand that hand, honey?
Seven, uh, seven twenty-two.
What?
The street.
Yep.
They should know where they live.
Yeah, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna figure it out. So the next one is Nicholas Morton. So if you signed up and I didn't?
That was you.
Was it me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand. I didn't, I didn't understand.
Do you wanna take your nuts with you?
No, I'm fine.
No.
Sorry.
Send it to me.
I didn't, I couldn't make up when you were calling my name.
It's not you, Mrs. Lopez. I know, I know who you are.
They just told me it was me.
No.
No, I'm on the list of dogs, obviously.
Nope, no, you're not.
I signed up, I signed up. It's a Maria's purpose.
She signed up right before me.
When you're ready for me, let me know.
Bobbiak? I will. All right.
Sorry.
Thank you.
That's okay.
We're sorry.
I'm gonna phone her.
That was a test.
That's what it's all about.
Are you Bob?
You just said my name, Nicholas Mouton.
Oh, yes.
She signed up right before me. That's why I sent her out.
Oh, okay. Well, that looks like Susie Lopez. That's not. Yes.
Oh, she signed up right after me.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Morton?
Hi, thanks, thanks for having me. My name is Yara Mouton, legally Nicholas Mouton. Um, I am a farm manager at Cedar Street Discovery Garden, which is on Cedar Street, right next to Chino Park. Um, I am here on behalf of the Homeless Coalition in support of what we're here for, which is, uh, voting down this ordinance. Um, I spend a lot of my days working hand in hand, side by side, with some of our homeless community. And I see the impacts that it has on them to be, have something to do, to have a community, to have people around them, and to have support. And I'm very well aware of the impact that being pushed to the margins has on people. It causes people to go deeper into their mental health issues. It causes people to go deeper into their, uh, drug addiction issues. Um, and this ordinance will separate people. Um, I'm here to remind you that a large group of unhoused people have a community, uh, what's the word? They take care of each other, they look after each other, they hold each other accountable. I am personally a lot more threatened by one person walking down an alleyway. And I've talked to a lot of my women friends about this. They all feel the same way, a lot more threatened by one person than they do a group. Um, another point I wanna make is that the implications of passing an ordinance like this can go a lot farther than you think. Like, I know there's a lot of intergenerational community in this town. I know there's lots of people that like to gather in a park in groups of twenty or more to share a picnic, to share in a barbecue. And are you going to hold them accountable the way you would plan on holding Pastor Clay and his group? Are you gonna tell people, oh, you can't have a picnic here because there's twenty of you or you have to pay this expensive permit? It's gonna, this is a community that loves to gather in parks. It's a community that loves to gather in large groups. And this ordinance will have unforeseen impacts on people. Um, I think that the criminalization of anyone for being a human being is counter to the values of this community. Um, and it confuses me when I see everyone stand and say this pledge of allegiance that claims that there's dignity and justice for all. And I ask you, like, how is the criminalization of people that? So please consider other alternatives. I know that a lot of the people in this room are willing to work on this, myself included. Um, our organization pays people small stipends when they work in the garden. And I've seen how quickly a $20 stipend can go towards improving the life of someone. And there's really not that many homeless people in this town. It's really not that hard for us to do something about this. But I assure you that passing laws like this just make things worse. Thanks for having me.
Okay, Mrs. Lopez, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Susie Lopez. My name is Marie Susan, but I've been called Susie since I was a little girl.
Put the mic down. You're not, you're a little bit shorter than Pastor Clay.
Is that better?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Anyway, I'm, I've been in Trinidad now for about fifty-four years. My husband and I came here for six months. He was a public defender. And then we ended up just loving this little community. Uh, we got to know people, we got to love this community. And we ended up staying, and my husband was an attorney forever. I was a teacher, I taught at the college. I taught elementary schools in Denver and in Santa Fe where I grew up. But I grew up in an environment that, we were poor. We were poor. My grandmother would let some little man come in the house and she would feed him. And then I would say, Grandma, who was that? I was about four and a half, five years old, I lived with her. And she said, I don't know, Hita, but he was hungry, and I fed him. And I said, oh, okay, and that was fine with me. And so I grew up in that thing where we take care of each other. As a teacher, I would take children home with me on a Friday, a Saturday morning and keep them all day, just to give them something to do, feed them, help them, cook a little something with me, just something that they could feel like they were doing something worthwhile. Because most of them came from very poor families too. And so it was my pleasure to take care of children. Today, even now, we have people that come to my laundromat and we try to take care of them. If they come in and they say, oh, I wanted to wash some clothes, but I don't have anything. I said, just bring it in, we'll take care of it for you. Or if they're hungry, I'll give them coffee and cookies or whatever we have. Because I firmly believe that we as a people have to take care of each other. That's why God put us here. I was gonna be a nun, I was gonna be a nun, and I kept thinking, well, when I'm a nun, I'm gonna be out in the world helping people, doing whatever. Well, it didn't happen, I met a young man and ended up. I love the Lord, and the Lord is always with us, and He helps us every moment of our lives. He helps me. I've had moments when I've been scared, I've been alone. My, my, I have two sons here, two daughters in Denver. But everybody has their thing, and they're all, they're all there to help me. But still, I'm responsible for me. And because I feel that way, though, and the Lord is always with me, and He has helped me so much. Therefore, I feel that as a community, we have to help other people. We have to, because why else are we here? God put us here for a reason, to help each other. And I mean, sometimes, there are people that try to take advantage, but as a rule, not always. We have to, as a community, help each other. And if I, I help people whatever way I can. And I think as a community, we have to do that too. And I'm, sometimes you say, well, the cost is or it costs that. I'm willing to help any way I can to make somebody's life a little bit better, or at least so that they can keep going, okay? And that's what I have to say. I love this town, I love all of you here. This is my, my home, and I love it. But by the same token, we have to help those people that need us. And sometimes there are people that take advantage, but that's okay. The Lord is taking care of all of us, and we have to help them. And that's what I have to say. Please, let's do good things and help everybody if we can. And if we have to donate money to help, we will do it.
Rebecca McNeil?
McNeil.
McNeil.
Good evening. I am Reverend Dr. Rebecca McNeil. My husband Mike and I moved to Trinidad, um, four years ago to retire here. We had friends that had moved to Trinidad and loved it. And we thought it was good enough for them, it would be good enough for us in retirement. And, uh, this is the fortieth anniversary year of my ordination into Christian ministry. I've served churches, um, all over this country, mostly in the Midwest, and I've served overseas. And I stand before you today to beg of you that you not pass this ordinance because our brothers and sisters who live on the streets and down by the river are our neighbors. The story of the Good Samaritan teaches us that those that are least like us are us. These are our brothers and sisters. And it's a thorny problem to deal with homelessness and all of the issues involved for a city. But certainly it is not the homeless, um, the, the homeless being present here is not a detriment to our love for our newly adopted city. We love being in Trinidad. I want to tell you just two stories briefly. Clay?
It's me.
I'm a preacher too. And I'm proud of our new pastor at, um, at Zionith. She's been our vicar, but now she's our pastor. I'm thankful for, uh, Lisa's testimony. I'm thankful for, uh, Lisa's testimony. I want to tell you two stories. One is a friend, a dear friend here in Trinidad, um, who earlier in her life, um, found herself homeless with her children. She, uh, lost her husband to cancer. And after he passed away, he was the primary source of income for the family. Uh, he died, she's deaf. She was not able to secure employment because of her deafness, and she found herself on the street for several years. Her life has turned around. She's now active in a nu- in a number of, um, community activities that I'm also involved in. I won't tell you who she is, but my guess is you may have seen her contributing in positive ways to our Trinidad community, because people gave her a chance. People gave her a hand up. They didn't kick her while she was down. They didn't send her further to the outskirts of society. But there were people, a city, and organizations in that city who provided a way up. And she's now one of the coolest human beings I've had the opportunity to come to know in my time here in Trinidad. I am so blessed by her presence in my life and can't fathom that she once lived under bridges. The second story I want to tell you is that a year ago, in the Safeway parking lot, there was a pipe sticking up about seven inches high where they'd taken out the divider in the park corral. And my foot caught the back end of, my sandal caught the back end of the pipe, and my toes were on the front end of the pipe. And I went flat on my face on pavement that was well over a hundred degrees. I was, um, mortified, and I was injured. Traffic was there. And do you know who came to my rescue? The homeless gentleman. There were three of them hanging out in front of Safeway. Those three men were at my side immediately. Ma'am, are you hurt? Ma'am, do we need to call an ambulance? Ma'am, is there someone we can call for you? Let us help you get up. One gentleman said, I'm not going to try to lift you. I'm going to get down on my hands and knees, and you use me and brace yourself on me so that you can get back up. Right?
One minute, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Those three gentlemen, not any of our other citizens, came to my aid. My wrist was broken. My jeans weren't torn, but scuffed. My knees were skinned underneath, my feet were skinned up. I was shaken, and they said, what can we do to help you? And I said, just, you already have. Help me get to my car. I'll go home. Sat in my car for a few minutes and then drove on home. These are our neighbors. We cannot push them to the outer edges. These are our neighbors. They're the ones who gave me help when I was down. Pastor Clay does ministry like I have never done in my life. Please support the work being done. And then do more. Thank you.
Last speaker is Joe Kuski. Louski? Kuski. Before I finish with this term, I will learn to pronounce your last name.
Stick with it.
Joe from Tarantula Cypress. I'm gonna stick with it. Thanks, Joe.
Uh, thanks, everybody. Um, I'm here as a local business owner, and as I believe everyone in council knows, a champion of growing tourism in Trinidad. I just want to make sure you hear a voice from this perspective that is not painting the unhoused as something to be shoved aside in the name of progress. Uh, evidence has shown repeatedly that criminalization of homelessness is ineffective at reducing the unhoused population. If enforced fairly, this ordinance would actually make our parks less welcoming to everybody. Um, but I don't really believe it would be levied at the general population for other gatherings. Uh, in fact, I suspect it would hardly be enforced at all, except for highly targeted efforts against those who are helping our most vulnerable.
Yeah.
Taking the seemingly easy way out, regardless of the subject at hand, rarely leads to lasting results. If we want to reduce the visibility of our unhoused population, the real answer is to house them. That takes economic development, affordable housing, shelters, and resources that lift them up, not punitive measures that attempt to push them further into the margins. Thank you.
I have two, uh, written, uh, two written, uh, speeches that were emailed to staff and myself today. Good evening. To whom it may concern, my name is Deanna Weller. I represent the Werpeno County Department of Human Services as their operations manager. I have been privileged to be a part of the efforts to help the unhoused in Werpeno County for a couple of months. I would ask that you not pass the ordinance. Our churches and mutual aid organizations are already holding the majority of the weight for the unhoused with a lack of resources as we, as we as a coalition have. We as a coalition do have a strong group of like-minded individuals working diligently to overcome our hurdles and bring services to our own unhoused. It is my opinion that these like-minded individuals would rather partner with our churches and aides, not add to their already exuberant load. Please look forward, please look towards the future and consider the efforts we are putting forth in partnerships we will need at that time. Thank you for your consideration, Deanna Weller. Dear Mayor, Councilmember, city staff, and citizens of Trinidad, I write today to ask that the city park permit ordinance be tabled at minimum in order to craft a better ordinance that does not appear to have its sights on one specific pastor who is performing Sunday gatherings while dispersing food and Christian ministry. I feel like this policy is another River Access Ordinance, one that is crafted for a specific group in mind, yet spreads a wide net that engulfs others with vague language that, in my opinion, could be discriminatory in origin, in origin. We currently have parking laws that state two-hour parking in the downtown corridor, and these rules are not enforced. Just like other unenforced laws, how we give favorable enforcement of this particular park permit policy, we have yet turned, yet turned blind eyes to other longstanding policies. If our goal is to bring our families and other citizens to our parks to enjoy them without any uncomfortable encounters, we need to address the issue at hand and not pit at low line for what could have unintended consequences. For example, who is going to want to have an impromptu birthday party at a public park when a permit is needed, much alone, much alone where the picnic tables have been already removed? Citizens may stop considering these parks as venues for group activities. Fewer families will utilize our public spaces, and then the only groups using them are the undesirables that this park permit is directed towards. If you want to make a policy purer made by, then it may, but make it more affordable with smaller fees and less bureaucratic red tape for common citizens to have to navigate. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thanks, dear, for your consideration. Carlos Lopez. That's the end of the petitions and communications. I remember five council reports. Mr. Williamson, do you have anything to report?
Um, Mayor, I, I, uh, the only thing I have to report, I don't have any meetings, but, um, I did receive a letter in the mail this week. It was anonymous in origin and was, um, I would read it for the record, but it was just, um, solid profanity. And it was, uh, complaining about the services at the, um, animal shelter, specifically, um, hours of operation, uh, primarily, and being under funding and requesting that our grant department, um, according to letter, our grant writing department should, uh, seek additional funding. But, uh, that was, that was the gist of that. And I did want to just bring it as it was addressed to all of council. I hope maybe you have received that.
We forwarded it to you.
I, I don't think, just I don't know.
Okay. That's it. Mr. Fenton, do you have anything?
Uh, I've got a portuguese radio. I'm sure everybody's, has got a portuguese radio at some point in time. Trinidad's lifespan about pickleball. So he's, he's ready, he's ready and excited and, and I think he's working on some, some, some here for pickleball. So some wristbands, some headbands, possibly some socks. I don't know. Just giving you guys a heads up. Don't be startled. With the flash, I'm gonna talk to you real quick, but it turns into twenty minutes.
Mr. Fenton?
Oh, for the sake of time, I'll forego my report.
I can't believe it. Mr. Shue?
Uh, we, uh, we, we attended a meeting in La Color, and, uh, for the opera, and, uh, there was really nothing really concerning us particularly. They, they're working on their budget for the opera. And just that they're progressing to get our solar farm done. And so we'll have our next meeting October, right, Halloween. So, but, um, other than that, everything seems to be doing well with our electrical power.
Mr. Debona?
Uh, nothing from the Los Angeles County Metterns Council this, this week.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have anything?
Unless it involves staff, I already know.
It's nice to have you back as well. Taking councilman's to heels lead, I'm reporting a local live council report too, because it's really not important. Item six, consent agenda approval. Item six, date approval of the regular meeting minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and the special meeting minutes of August twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Item B, reappointment of Frank Leoni to the Planning, zoning, and various commission. Item six, see special event permit application as corrected for mal minus and spiritualist filed by Trinidad Los Angeles County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at two oh one West Main Street, correct? There's an error in, in the, uh, agenda.
We, we corrected it on the asking, yes, Mayor.
Yes. Two oh one West Main Street on September thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Approval, uh, approval of bills totally one million, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. The only line item of, of, uh, large quantity is the, one of the payments for the pickleball court totally two thousand three hundred and four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Approval of payroll August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five through August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve this consent agenda approval? Mr. Shue moved, does Sarah second? Mr. Debona? Second, call the vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Shue?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhale?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item seven A, public hearings. Public hearing for consideration of an ordinance to extend for an indefinite term the one percent sales tax originally authorized by a vote of the people on November fourth, nineteen eighty, and extended six times since, and to provide for dedication of the revenue from such tax to capital projects, purchases, and maintenance. The public hearing is now open. Is there any public, uh, comment on this ordinance? There being none? Is there any, uh, any comment from? The hearing is over?
No, just our question.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just here in case you have questions.
Okay. They were pretty silent a couple of minutes ago. All right. Item seven A one, second reading of an ordinance to extend for an indefinite term the one percent sales tax originally authorized by a vote of the people on November fourth, nineteen eighty, and extended six times since, and to provide for dedication of the revenue from such tax to capital projects, purchases, and maintenance. Do I have a motion to, to, uh, to approve this second reading?
Someone?
Second. You didn't even, Ms. Ogletree moved in. Mr. Shue seconded, who's on the spot today. Call the vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Shue?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhale?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item seven B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance submitting to voters of the city of Trinidad at the regular election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty five. A referendum to indefinitely extend the one percent sales tax originally authorized by the people on November fourth, nineteen eighty, and extended by a vote of the people six times since, and dedicate the revenues from such sales tax to capital projects, purchases, and maintenance. The hearing is now open. Is there any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any questions from council? The hearing is now closed. Item six B one, second reading, reading of an ordinance submitting to the voters of the city of Trinidad at the regular election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty five. A referendum to indefinitely extend the one percent sales tax originally authorized by the people on November fourth, nineteen eighty, and extended by a vote of the people six times since, and dedicate the revenues from such sales tax to capital projects, purchases, and maintenance. Do I have a motion? Ogletree, read the move, motion?
Second.
Mr. Tree seconded. Call the vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Shue?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhale?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item six C, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance in section one back four of chapter twenty-one, special events of the Trinidad Municipal Code to extend, expand on the definition of a special event. The public hearing is now open. Any comments that, from the audience that you haven't commented? Any questions from?
I actually have more on it for you guys, if it's possible, or no?
I'm sorry.
You already commented. I gave you an either or, either at the beginning or at this. We've already dedicated a lot of time for public comment. Yes.
Um, Mayor, members of city council, at our last, um, meeting where this was considered, council member Ogletree had some questions concerning application and seeking some clarification. The title of the ordinance has been changed to, um, include additions to section one dash six, two dash three, and two dash six to clarify application of the definitions that are included in any ordinance.
Sorry.
So, um, under section So, um, under section, I'm sorry, section one dash four definition, item nine D, section nine D, addresses the temporary versus ongoing events, so any event that occurs more than three times in a calendar year or is ongoing, meaning recurring more than two times in a calendar month. I will, I also want you to know that Kim Helen from the police department actually assisted with addressing some of these issues. Uh, we've added markets. As you know, the farmer's market every year applies for a permit to use the park for the farmer's market. So markets is added in there for an example of special events. One dash six and exemptions. Number three, a peaceful demonstration that does not impede travel on a public street or sidewalk. I know councilmember Ogletree has concerns about demonstrations being included at all. And what I would say to that is, it's nice to have on the books and, and helpful to have on the books language that is very specific and, and let staff know how to answer questions. So very often, and for my entire tenure, I've had people ask, do I need a permit for a demonstration? This found it out. Even though we know what the answer is, now it could be actually classified in our code and we would know then what, how to answer that because it's, it's part of our local laws there. So no permit required, you just can't impede traveling public or sidewalk travel. And then in section two dash three, it assists, we've added language to assist in the investigation of an application so that we have clearer parameters in considering applications. And so language has been added to say whether the proposed activity or use of public right of public property will not unreasonably interfere with or detract from the general public enjoyment of the public property, whether the proposed activity and use will not unreasonably interfere with or detract from the promotion of public health, welfare, safety, and recreation, C, whether the proposed activity or use is not reasonably anticipated to incite violence, crime, or disorderly conduct, and D, whether the proposed activity will, will not entail unusual extraordinary or burdensome expense or place operation by the city. And then, let's see where I got it. I, I gave everybody also copy with red writing and maybe some copies. Um, I believe the denial of permit, the only addition to that, I believe, is number eight, the event does not meet one or more of the previous five conditions. And the five conditions are, what I would say is probably typical of what you would see in any law that governs public property, where we don't want to see conflict with another event or there's material misrepresentations in the application. It doesn't meet the standards, is required by chapter and section. It's unsafe, it interferes with construction or what have you. And there's other things, costs, or you don't need to abide by the requirements. Now, um, I wanted to add a couple of more thoughts for your purposes and also for those present. I think that it's meld, this is melded a lot into something that it wasn't intended to be. Back when city council approved fees, a resolution imposing fees, it was to recover city costs. We already have a fee for special events permits, it was already fifty dollars. It was already a three-day duration, it already had the insurance requirements. What we lacked in, in this ordinance was a little bit more of use of parks, for instance, for, or, um, well, we had fees for use of like the Southside Park for private use or even for other governmental uses or school uses. We've added fees to deal with those sorts of things. But it's kind of, it's changed its face and it really wasn't supposed to, it wasn't intended to. It's about managing public spaces. The city, for instance, doesn't allow private businesses to operate on public property. And it is about equal treatment. And what I would say is that in researching, part of, part of the governments, because we are a local government, a part of our role is to avoid the perception that the government is endorsing or favoring a specific religion. So for instance, there may be another religion out there that looks to that and says, okay, we're allowing ongoing religious services in our park, in that public space, they're not being charged a fee. I'll give you a fore- instance, we just had another organization that was a religious organization hold an event at Kit Carson Park, they paid the fee, they took the permit, they had the insurance, and we accommodated them accordingly. So it's to not be, it's to treat people fairly and equally. And then also, it would, it could certainly be perceived that currently they are receiving special unequal treatment compared to other community groups. But a lot of it is also the endorsing or endorsement of the, the, the ongoing religious activities. So it's just, there has to be a separation of, of that. And obviously, you know, every other, every other church in our community has services on their private property. And again, this is about managing public spaces. And also, I mean, it has to be equal. And so it's not about treating people unequally or unfairly, it's about treating each group equally. So Hispanic Chamber is another one, they have another, they have a permit for their chili festival on the thirteenth. Same, same thing. And they weren't, they weren't, they weren't necessarily prepared for our fees, but they understand them, that fees are associated with the work involved by the city.
Any questions or comments from council?
I have questions and comments, and other, whether my comments are more appropriate for what we're talking about later, or if I should just address them. Um, is it correct, Ms. Garrett, that all special permits cost the same thing regardless of how complicated the event is, how long it is, anything like that?
Uh, well, to be honest with you, there's a couple of fees that we outlined. I think we probably need to revisit, a block party, for instance, is a hundred dollars versus fifty. But aside from that, yes.
Okay, so, so the Hispanic festival can pay fifty dollars for a three-day festival in the streets. That requires a closing of streets. And then some ten group of people who want to contribute food in this block group are going to have to pay fifty dollars for a three-day permit. That will be maybe limited by a couple hours, maybe, you know, that's, that's the way this would play out. What is the penalty if someone doesn't get a permit?
It would be, they would have to be cited into municipal court and it would be punishable under chapter one, but finally be, could be three hundred and fifty.
Could be.
I, you know, I guess I can make my comments now. Like I said when I was on the screen the other day, I appreciate the efforts to address the points that I had. I still have a problem with melding together this, the changes that are proposed for this permit application with the remainder of chapter twenty-one without any acknowledgement of what we're actually talking about. I mean, it strikes me as, what we're really concerned about is some destruction of first, of public property that's happened at the park, some garbage that's been left around, some apparent intimidation that people have felt when they've been in the park and there have been groups gathered, some issues with drug paraphernalia being left in the park, safety issues like that that have been rightfully brought up. Those things all, lawyering, all those things are things we already have laws against, correct?
They are.
So I, what I don't understand is why we're taking this huge leap to, to hone this into our special events permit, which doesn't, to me, seem to be close to what we also recall as special events, like a fair, a, a market, a festival. All those things require a great deal of staff time. And, and while should be fine, or should be, have a fee attached to them because it addresses staff time.
I would say it's that for managing your public property, though. It's, you still have that responsibility to every citizen that you're managing that public property. And so regardless of whatever the circumstances are, yes, I would agree that there's been destruction of property. And, and I think the city has tried to accommodate, do various things. We, we talked previously about having porta potties out there and now we can't even get porta potties placed anymore because they end up in the river. So it's not for lack of trying, but we do need to control, control and manage public spaces. And again, council has on the flip side, be careful about being overly accommodating to one organization, especially if it's a religious organization, because we can have them, any other group of, any other church organization come forward and say, I'm, I'm going to do the same thing because you haven't required a permit of them. So again, we're requiring a permit of an organization that's blocking a street and relying on city resources on public property. It's the same thing. They're using city resources, public property, and so we're requiring a permit.
I am not arguing that point, I think that's a valid concept. But what I'm saying is when you push this together with the rest of what's in chapter twenty-one, you get a situation where people are required to apply for a permit to distribute food forty-five days in advance of when they want to do that. Demonstrations, I have my own concerns about that. I'm a big fan of the First Amendment and anything that threatens the, or regulates the right to peacefully assemble, I want to take a really hard look at that. And this is part of that. This is a peaceable assembly that is being, what these people are about. So I want to be really careful and only do the things that are absolutely required. Forty-five days? I don't know, is that required? I mean, I can see for a big festival where you've got to think through all those things. I understand that there's a waiver on that staff has the ability to make a decision, but that's on you then. That's, you have to make a decision. You have to decide something that someone might say, well, you decided that for them, but you didn't decide that for us, that's a problem. I mean, that, then you're having to pick and choose who you're allowing to have events. And I'm uncomfortable with that. I think that it's just, as a few people have mentioned, I appreciated every comment that was made, but I think it is an overreach and I think it's unduly burdensome. I don't think that, I don't want to deny that there's a problem, there is a problem. And I think that sometimes we fall into the false dichotomy of, well, we can't help homeless people, we're going to have any kind of regulated behavior. That doesn't make any sense. Parks are for everyone, including homeless people. They also have to, they also have to comply with the laws that apply to all of us, to all of us. So if that's the concept, I'm good with it.
So, and what I would say in response is, I'm not here to argue for this. My understanding is this was what city council wanted, this is what staff drafted for city council. It's not my decision, certainly. I have to be the one that has to enforce this.
I understand that, but it's my job as someone who represents the people of this community to, to share my concerns.
Let's continue with somebody else.
See, ma'am, I, I was under the impression that Les may have had comments that were. If, if I could, and I, I don't want to interrupt and I'm sorry, I appreciate everything that's been said. And to address this point, we are not advocating for one position or another. But I do want to say, what this is about is controlling, having better control over what goes on in city parks. And when you have crowds, and with all due respect to everyone who is here tonight, and the comments were very moving, very touching, I feel every word of them and, and everything that was said. And, you know, anyway, so I just want to say that, but this helps us to, to control and regulate the activity, the activities that go on in the park. And if you did want to have an event, if you wanted to have a, a birthday party for a family member or you wanted to have some kind of event in a park that involved a number of people, yes, it needs to be enforced uniformly and fairly and equally as to all people in all demographics and all groups. But it helps you to plan for what is going, you're going to be able to do in, in a city park. If you want to, you know, if you can plan ahead, it's going to help you to know what other people are going to be doing. This is not, I want to emphasize, it is not targeting the unhoused or the homeless. And I'm sorry, but it's not. And ma'am, I would ask that the audience, please refrain from yelling and groaning and commenting while we are now having this conversation. But it is not targeting the homeless. If you had other impromptu gatherings of people in the parks, especially on a regular basis, we would be doing the same thing. I know that it is the unhoused and the people who are getting fed by, by Pastor Plague, God love him and everything he is doing, but it is interfering with the use and enjoyment of parks, city parks by other people. And I, I want to say too, to address this point, and that is, you know, it was a request of council, we brought this ordinance forward, but it was another demographic that came to you and was speaking. It's kind of gone from one extreme to another, I mean that respectfully, not argumentatively. Because that, no, it was a whole different group who were saying, you know, you had people from in-bank, you had people from various segments of society who were saying that we have, you know, we have criminal activity in the park, that, that happens in parks, I get it. But bathrooms cannot be used, you know, they're locked, porta potties cannot be, you know, put in, in place of that. Things are getting destroyed, more cameras are going to go in to help with more enforcement. But these are all things that are kind of in response to really, you know, more kind of criminal activity and things going on by whatever segment of society, whether it's old white guys that have a home or, you know, young people. Right, I, I don't mean to be glitter, but I'm just saying, there is an increase in criminal activity, not necessarily the, the unhoused, but, but this is all designed to help us get more control of city parks. And that is what we are trying to do. Thank you.
Want somebody else?
I, I won't be happy to do that, ma'am, 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 but I wasn't finished with what I wanted to say. But I do want to hear what other people have to say.
Okay, please, let somebody else talk in there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Under, one of my questions was answered, but let's say an organization has an event and city staff and workers put in X amount of time and hours and there's a cancellation. Is there an additional fee that is incurred or a penalty or, well, the fee be just maybe for another scheduling time?
I don't know that our permit addresses staff. Um, if they, if some, if our staff has already put in the time, it's billable time.
Okay, so is?
Perhaps we could apply the special event permit fee, but they're going to incur that staff time again.
Right.
Again, for trying to recover costs.
Okay, that's just, that's just off the cuff there, I just wanted, just out of curiosity.
Mr. Schu? I, I don't really have any issue with, you know, the ordinance itself. I, I think we need to somehow or another get this straightened out. And like you say, we need to control the parks and we have to do that because it's getting to the point that, you know, this has been going on for quite a while. And there really hasn't been any improvement on the other part for them to justify not having this. And if we don't do something, we're, one lady got up and one of the ladies there said it was a beautiful place, we have beautiful parks. Well, that's what we want to keep of and for everybody's enjoyment. And I don't have any issue with the homeless people coming to the parks and sitting under a tree or something. I think that's probably their rights. But we need to find a way to control the trash and vandalism and stuff. And I think that's what this ordinance is really set for. It's not trying to ban the homeless. It's not trying to ban the homeless or anybody else. Just need to find a location that's suitable for them to have their religious services and for food distribution. And I think that could be worked out. The lady there said that she wants to work with us in that. And I think that's a good point. We should do that. But I think the ordinance needs to be taken care of so that we can do some of this work and make everything better for everybody.
So I have a few questions that I gotta go through in my head, so I'm just gonna go through. One, and these aren't here to take, they're just trying to clarify into my mind to come up with this, a difficult decision, which it shouldn't have been, meaning that it should have been just management of our parks. But it has turned into something else. So, I'm just curious, so like, maybe these questions were... We're speaking to Sundays, right? Or are we speaking to every day?
We're speaking on every day here.
So every day on the ordinance, right? So, I know we've taken out a permit. There's a reason for it, is to take it out and to go through and make sure that you pick it up for yourself and everything's left the way that you started it. I'm not 100% sure because I don't know. And if that's, if that's the case, if this is where we're going, why we're doing this. Just to make sure that the park is left the way that it was, which I understand that's the case. I don't, there's a lot I don't understand on this other part. And I'm just saying because it's hard, because it's important in two directions. Managing the park is important, we have to keep it clean. I don't know if we've gotten a commitment from anybody on the other side that has said they were gonna be picking up the park, cleaning up, making sure that that was done after everything was happened. I know we got a couple commitments saying out there that they'd be willing to give money, that they'd be willing to fix whatever. Till this point, I don't think we've heard that, to where they've been willing to come back and say, "Okay, there's been damage and destruction, and the community hasn't come to the city at once that I have seen, heard, that I know of."
They say we weren't happy to come clean up.
Please sit down, sir. Sorry. I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
We'll clean it up.
So this is what...
Sit down, please.
You asked.
You got your time. Please be just respectful of ours. Thank you.
So, being on that, and trying to figure out, this conversation hasn't happened yet, and this option hasn't been given. And that's why these work sessions, I think, that work session, these meetings are great because now we have the hearing, that we're able to hear from you in a different sense. Sorry.
That's okay, go.
So this is how I'm weighing it out. So I apologize. But, so in my opinion, I, I let, the verbiage seems fine, I'll be honest, when it comes down to the actual permit. The effect, I'm not fine with. And that's what I'm trying to figure out. So that's where I'm at right now. I don't know if that helps. I don't know. I'm trying to process in my own head, because this is our decisions we have to make. I know it's easy on one side to say, one way, we have to live with ourselves after. So just to make that clear, we make that decision, we have to be able to sleep at night. And I know our decisions affect everybody.
Then, real quick, I'm not gonna hold you guys up. This is not a personal one. Just to get the playing field level to where parks are being managed correctly for everybody. So for those that are not known, don't take this as a personal attack against people without homes or drug addiction or anything. This actually is giving you control to, to make things more clear. We've got some pastors out in the audience, people like that, clergy, that actually should take these tools to make their situation better instead of it being a free-for-all. It's overture, I'm sure it's gonna say something that's, it's gonna seem like, it's not a personal attack. I do not want you to feel that way or think that way, or think that the city doesn't have empathy or sympathy. We just want to make sure that everybody's getting the same treatment so you can pass on the same information.
Mr. Williamson.
I did want to ask Mr. Downs a question, if I may. There's been, for lack of a better word, several allegations that this would cause an increase of some, some level of liability for the city. Les, can you speak to that?
I can. And, you know, that has been, you kind of bandied about it in a number of, in a number of forms and in a number of ways. I've heard that being talked about. But what I do want to say is that this is, this regulation we are, we are trying to accomplish here is a legitimate and compelling government interest that is rationally and reasonably related to what we are trying to do. So we are acting appropriately for an issue and problem that has been brought to the attention of council. It is a legitimate function of this governmental body to do this if you decide to do it in response to the issues that have been brought to council's attention. Does that help?
It does. So your, your legal opinion is it does not increase our liability?
That's correct.
So, I'm hesitant to address this, but I think because the court has been removed from the bottle, I think, I think, um, there's been a lot of statements that if, if people are god fearing, that we, we can't pass this. And I know, you know, by your works you'll be known. That's absolutely true. I mean, that's, that's true as a, just a natural law. You'll, you'll be known by your works, absolutely. There's been a lot of anecdotal evidence provided tonight, and I, I don't mean to single anyone out, but Reverend, I believe that your title, "I'm So Sorry That You Were Injured at Safeway," that sounded horrific. And I'm glad that people came to your aid. But to say that townspeople would not have rendered aid, you can't necessarily say you were rendered aid by homeless individuals, and I'm very glad of that. And you can't make the same argument in the other direction either, that homeless people are entirely responsible for all of the bad behavior of the park. That's, that's not a reasonable argument either. The other thing is, and this is still part of that same bottle, is there's a, I feel, and this is not in a self-pitying sense of the word, but there's a general attack that if, if we, as a collective body, pass this, that we've done something immoral against religious convictions. And that's, that's simply not the case. I know, I would say, all of these people appear fairly well. And in how individual lives, I know, I know at least two others
Yes.
that have routinely aided, helped individuals that are unhoused, and I'm glad of that. In our personal lives, we do that. But this, this is not our personal lives up here. It's, it's not our personal lives. We've been elected to this position. All of us have been elected to this position for the benefit of all of those that have elected us here. At this point, this wasn't ever to criminalize certain individuals. However, it has become that in effect because of the very apparent misuse of the park by certain groups. So it's taken on that effect. But it's not the intent to penalize, criminalize any individual citizens. And to claim that we're disallowing the use of the intended purpose of the park, that's not the intended use of the park to speak specifically to the Sunday gathering. Churches have churches in which they do that, and they pay for the upkeep of the churches. So even, even if this is passed tonight, it would be maintenance of the upkeep of a church, and it's reasonable. It's our responsibility here for the majority of the public. And as was alluded to earlier, there's been extreme arguments on both sides. And I think, as Councilman Schuh said, this has been going on for some time, and we need to try something. This is, this is something that we can try to curb, you know, gatherings that cause issues in the park. That's what I have to say about it.
I'll get to that, Karen. Okay. First of all, I'm so sorry, my cell phone, I forget pretty much sometimes, and my apologies. And my apologies also if you think, you know, we're putting you in a bad situation, and you are absolutely right. You're here to present this because we asked you to be here. And I apologize if that, if the, the meeting, the meeting was, was construed as something else. But, you know, I'm, I'm really kind of upset because it's like you're Christian and we're not. You know, I'm a Christian. I am my brother's keeper, but there's 8,000 other brothers in this community that I have to watch out for. In addition to that, I want all of you to know, because I don't think any of you are here, when a mother came to us crying because her, her son is hanging out at the park with the people that are down there, um, leaving, and he's given paraphernalia to do drugs, and I'm not talking about nark it, I'm talking about stuff to smoke. This, this woman came to my office and here, she said, "I am going to bury my son." If something doesn't happen at that park, because she knows how easy it is to get in there. Now, I'm not implying that the homeless are the ones that are responsible. What I'm saying is that criminal element is an easier way to operate because of the masses down at the park. I have had in-bank, I had a lady at in-bank that told me during her transactions, I went to her office and looked out of the window. She said during, trying to do business, I've had sexual, people having sex in the park. So those are things we have to, to address. I wish there was a solution where you could do what you do and we could do what we, we do. But obviously, that's not working because this has been going on for a long time. We've had people come in and complain. I went to every, every business around the park, and each one of them had been affected by what's going on in that park. And in order, I can't say, "Okay, you're a criminal, out. You're a Christian, you stay. You're a criminal, out." We have to enforce straight across the line for all of us. And to say that this is punitive, I resent that because that's not punitive. We're trying to clean up the park, period, in a city. Okay.
Briefly, Ms. Garrett, I do not have any means to attack you. I'm basically, I'm talking to these people, and I'm talking to those people, but you're the one who's presenting it, and that's why my questions are to you. And I apologize if I can't pass you aggressively. What, the point I was trying to make at the very end of all that is that it's a false dichotomy for everyone here to think that you can't work with homeless people, you can't have a coalition that works with homeless as well as regulate the conduct of people in the parks. Both things can happen at the same time. And that's what I think we're missing. We do need regulation in the parks. What I'm saying is that the way that this is written, I think, is extreme, and it should be directed to this specific or any other type of specific gathering that's like this in the park that makes sense. It doesn't have to be 45 days in advance, it doesn't have to be $50, it doesn't have to have a million dollar, every single event has a million dollar liability policy attached to it. That's crazy, frankly, compared to a festival versus people standing around eating food. I, I think that that is, that's my heartateness. I share the concern of this community as, like the mayor said, as many of you are, we have had as many on the other side who are just outraged by the things that have happened downtown. And so as representatives of the whole city, we have to take everything into account. I want us to work with the homeless people. I want us to help them as best that we can. But I also want our downtown to be a place where people, everyone feels welcome. That's all I can say.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Item 7C1, the second reading of an ordinance amending section 1 to 4 of chapter 21, special events of the Trinidad Municipal Code.
You need to close the hearing.
Oh, I got it. Okay. Sorry, period. 7C1, second reading of an ordinance amending section 4, section 1 dash 4, chapter 21, special events of the Trinidad Municipal Code, to expand, expand on the definition of a special event. I need a motion?
So move.
Mr. Schuh, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Thurman, second. Call the vote, please.
Tabana?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
No.
Oboltry?
No.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. The ordinance passed. Item 9, unfinished business, there is none. Item 9, please, consideration of an appointment to the Trinidad Housing Authority Board. We have one. Let's wait a minute before the Sodas who wanted to... Consideration of an appointment to the Trinidad Housing Authority Board. We have two applicants. We have Donna Haddow and Melissa Clark. Unfortunately, there's only one vacancy. I need a motion to either nominate Ms. Haddow or Ms. Clark.
I'd make a motion to nominate Donna Haddow.
Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Tabana?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Item 9, consideration of appointment to the Historic Main Street Board. We have two applicants. Mr. Shepherd has dropped out, so we have one addition, one remaining, and it is Air Julianne Denther. I need a motion to appoint this Denther to the Historic Main Street Board.
I'd like to motion that Air Julianne Denther be referred to the Historic Main Street Board as representative from the Trinidad Lasimbas County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Trigell, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Tabana?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. Item 9C, consideration of the engineering proposal received by GMC Incorporated Consulting Engineers for completion of the water system master plan.
I thought we wanted a cap on you, no more. I know.
These change orders are hitting.
It's like a bat pin.
No change orders tonight.
No change orders. So we have, for consideration of the engineering proposal from GMS Incorporated Consulting Engineers completed water system master plan. GMS Incorporated Consulting Engineers, our city's all-haul engineer, submitted a cost proposal to complete a water master plan for the city of Trinidad. The importance of a water system master plan is to address both immediate needs and long-term sustainability in water resource management. We have $175,000 budgeted for that this year. I got an unofficial proposal, just... I got a, uh, unofficial proposal just last year from Black and Beach to see what it would cost for a budgeting, only two hundred seventy-five thousand. So this year we actually went with GMS Engineering, which is one of our all call engineers and they're doing it for a hundred seventy-five thousand. So that's saving us a hundred thousand dollars on our budget this year. Um, in March two thousand one, Black and Beach prepared preliminary treat, a preliminary treated water system report. These documents are vital planning documents for the city's water system. This master plan will serve as a comprehensive guide for the city's future development and management of our existing water system and will also include a future site and location for new water treatment plants. The water master plan is essential investments, insurance, sustainability and efficiency in water management for resource management, infrastructure planning, regulatory compliance, financial planning, emergency preparedness and public health and safety. Item Terry probably vouched for this, that anytime you go in for grants also, if you have an engineered master plan and know you're not just shooting from the hip when you're asking for money, it helps identify your systems deficiencies, capital improvement projects as we move forward with horrible water. So.
We'll be looking at master planning for all the utilities and this will lay out how we will look at projects in the future. Thank you, Mr. V.
We did have a preliminary one like I stated in two thousand one, but these have changed. We had Cougar Canyon, Eric, the theme was supposed to can, none of that happened. So, you know, we have to go back, start over again and get some of this, some of this more accurate to move forward for our system. So, and also Black and Beach did do the one for us in two thousand one. The PE for Black and Beach was Kevin Matter. He's no longer with them, but he's working on a contract for GMS Engineering. So he would be the six, the same one conducting that for GMS Engineering.
Mr. Williamson, so you're, you're the engineering guy. Do you have a question?
I'm, I'm far, far from that. Um, the, the only, um, question I have is, is one from a public record. And, um, is, is this, uh, going to impact any of the, uh, rate case studies in the future?
Impact what?
Uh, rate case studies for the future.
Yeah, it should help tremendously. By doing this, it identifies our system deficiencies and it actually helps out with our future capital improvement projects to put into the budget. So it, yes, it'll impact the boat, good and bad. I mean, it's, our system needs to be upgraded, but it's going to lay out how we move forward doing that. So.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Mr. Thurman?
No questions.
No, I don't have any questions, sir. I'm just curious. Is it going to change the viscosity of the water?
Mr. Chu, you're the utilities guy. Mr. Tabana?
No.
I'm just curious, does this fit into the water wise kind of, you know, we plan water?
That's, that's, yes, it, as we get the master plan, it'll go under the, our water group program.
Okay.
And that's how it enables to, to put those items in there. Um, it, it prioritizes our needs moving forward and that's all. So, so yes, it will rate this and that as far as the rates, it'll let us know what we need, when we need to do it and how to budget for it. So.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
I have no questions. I know you know what you're doing. Okay, we need to call for the vote please to accept, uh, GMS's consulting engineering contract for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Trigell and Chu? Got so many papers up here. Call the vote please. Tabana?
Yes.
Chu? Chu?
Yes. I didn't hear yet.
I'm sorry. Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. Item nine D, consideration of the bid summary for the water improvement project, projects number, number fifteen dash two over three, Morris Canyon Water Loop for seven hundred eighty-four thousand and nine hundred. Item, uh, bin number sixty, I'm sorry, project number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, Sycamore Water Line Renewal, one hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Project number seventeen dash two oh three, two, I'm sorry, two oh two three, University Railroad Crossing Water Line Replacement, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And project number eighteen dash two, twenty twenty-three, Western Water Service Line Relocation Project for four hundred eighty-two thousand and, and eighty-two dollars. I need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is that you, mister?
Yes.
Oh, is you? We can't tell you.
Okay.
So on this, when we applied back in April twenty twenty-two, Mike was city manager. He said, hey, there's some CBS money out there. We need some shovel ready projects. See what you can get together. We only had like four days to get this together. So I had these four projects that get some bids out on real quick, get the application done and we applied back in April of, uh, twenty twenty-two. In December of the same year, we were told we were awarded the bid. Didn't realize it was going to take this long. This is federal money. It's the first time I'd ever applied for one. And three years later, we finally got funding for it. So, um, a bid opening was conducted by GMS Engineering consultant on Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, a little over three years later, for the four water improvement projects identified. The engineer's estimate was projected at one million, six hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars. And the total cost for all four proj, all four projects came in at two million, six thousand, seven hundred and forty-six to complete the four projects. We budgeted one million, seven hundred thousand dollars to replace these four projects. Um, we got the EPA Community Grant, the CBS Grant for one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand dollars, total funding of two million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Our bid total came out to two million, six thousand, seven forty-six. So we have a surplus of eight hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four, case we get any change orders. Four projects. And we don't have to take it to the taxpayers and hopefully not have to increase rates. So back in two thousand two when we did this, I didn't realize it was going to take this long. So as every year went by, any money that was saved in the budget, Cheryl and I would roll it over in a master budget and try to make up for contingency. We didn't know with COVID coming in, we didn't know where these were going to land. So that's how we ended up with the one point seven. So, um, so far everything's come out good. Um, I would use your approval to report. RMS Utilities, we bid them all independently because we didn't know who was going to get them. RMS Utilities was rolling on all four. And it's the one, one funding for everything. So.
How come we didn't, uh, I mean, just curious, how come we didn't bid, uh, the Segundo line in? By Ringo's there. That thing's been looking water for years.
It's in the.
Isn't it? You said Weston, isn't it?
Weston.
Oh, Segundo. Okay. I was thinking where Ringo's was. I know, I was thinking above where you.
No, it's the right there.
It's right there. Yeah. Cause that was one of the projects that was.
So the one we prioritized, we prioritized Morris Canyon Loop, we prioritized. So the Allenville Tank is one separate pressure zone. It feeds everybody from Allenville, South Road, Wendy's, Tequila's, Santa Fe Trail Ranches, Big O. So we have a leak on that line. We shut everybody out, heads south. So we want to loop another line coming down Morris Canyon Road from East Street, Santa Fe Trail to help not have to have so many people out of water, going to have that issue. Segundo, we have an old two-inch galvanized water line coming down the eastbound middle of, of Highway Twelve. So you go through, you see all those patches. There's all the leaks we fixed on it. State Highway Department's been wanting to do an overlay, but they haven't done that because we keep having leaks on that.
It's more sprinkler system, really.
Exactly. So we want to replace out the six-inch water main, reconnect all the services with three-quarter tight kawfford. That way, that can get overlaid and be done. In Weston, we have an old fifteen-inch steel water main on the south side of Highway Twelve. When they ran the new transmission line down on the north side, instead of transferring all the service lines over, they just reconnected that old fifteen-inch to the new line and left all the service lines still hooked up to the old line. Well, we keep getting leaks on that old fifteen-inch steel line. Back then, insurance claim on a basement, they got flooded on that one. So we have to get that replaced. The other one is University Street Railroad Crossing between the Welcome Center and the Car Wash underneath the road tracks. Well, obviously our water line was there before the railroad tracks because it's not even cased. We had water leak there one time. It's old twelve-inch cast iron main. The leak came up right in the middle of railroad tracks. So we had to shut it down, cut some isolation valves in on both sides of the railroad tracks and that's still the way it is today. So. They wanted, we need to do a bore, a push bore, cross underneath the railroad tracks about ten feet deep for all the other utilities and tie back into that twelve-inch main on both sides of railroad tracks. That way we can get that full of water coming back through there again. So those are the four projects that we did independently. We have Morris Canyon Road being prioritized just because we had the new every joint boat building going over there. The new main's going to be on their side of the road. If not, we're going to have to cross Santa Fe Trail in time for the water line on Santa Fe Trail. Then Segundo coming numbers two with, uh, I believe it, University Railroad Crossing and then Weston. So.
Are you going to have an issue with that railroad?
We have an ongoing permit right now. It expired. I just renewed it again. So, so we should be fine.
You ask questions on it.
There wasn't a question. That was clarification.
Okay. I called it trying to say that. Clarifications and then questions.
That's what I, questions.
Do you have any questions or clarifications? Do you have any questions?
No, I have my clarification.
Mr. Chu?
And the Segundo line excellence in the middle of the road?
Yeah, it's right in the middle of the eastbound land coming down.
Okay. And we're moving, and we're moving that out of there?
We're getting out of, yeah, we're, we're doing a tighter transmission line, stay off the shoulder, cross over to the north side and continue downward. Not going to put any doubts on there anymore.
Awesome.
Okay.
No questions.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Just an observation. Um.
Well, don't do that.
I'll make it quick. Um, I, I'm sure most of us remember that old Dunkin' Donut commercial. It's time to make the donuts.
Okay.
And the, I think the point of that commercial was it's, it's never glamorous or fancy. And unfortunately, you, when city council becomes glamorous and fancy and something, you know, tough is happening.
That's when I leave, you're, when I leave, it's good.
No. But, you know, people are interested in the process when it's, when it's something big and exciting. But the fact of the matter is the financial, uh, discipline that you've expressed to us is really to be commended. I mean, you, you've built a project portfolio, uh, planned for the future, continue to roll over, uh, you know, positive assets, built an appreciable, um, fund, uh, contingency fund and now you've got fun funding to do all of this. So, um, it's, it speaks volumes of the team, uh, and just, uh, unfortunately, it's not seen, but, uh, it is appreciated. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this EPA Community Grant for one point one, was that what you meant grant challenge for?
No.
No?
That's, 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 that's the whole thing. That's coming up in the, coming up next.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's different.
Thank you.
That was, that was for the old Silverstone project that we're.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Clarification.
We got it.
So I need, we have a motion by Ogultry, second by Chu, call the vote please for the bid summary.
Tabana?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. Item nine E, consideration of the second amendment for the professional services submitted by HG Consult for the re-scope and redesign of the Santa Fe Trail Multi-Use Path Project. Project number twelve dash twenty twenty-two. I bought.
The union mayor, members of council, Mr. Justice. Um, so I come to you tonight because we, uh, we, uh, first of all, is Mr. Mug on? Jerry there? I'm here, though. Thanks, Jerry. So Jerry Mug is with HG Consult. So I'm going to explain the project. If you have any questions, we have Jerry on there. So, um, we consulted with HG to do the, our Santa Fe Trail Multi-Use Path. Um, we, um, come back with a cost expenditure. We were hoping, we thought the project would be at two million dollars because we had a grant. Um, for two hundred, two billion, two hundred fifty thousand, which four hundred fifty thousand was a city match. C dot came up at one point eight million. Unfortunately, for the, uh, they came back with the design fees, they were twice that. They were almost, they were over four million dollars, four point three closer to that too. So anyway, the, the project costs doubled from what we thought it was going to be to where, to where it ended up at. So we all sat down, sat down with Tara, uh, Engineering and sat down with HG and we tried to figure out a way that we could redesign the project, uh, go from a ten-foot path, an eight-foot path, uh, go from a five-inch thick path, excuse me, from a six-inch path to five inches in depth, take out the pedestrian bridge, try to get the project back in. We can afford it. Cause right now we cannot afford an additional two, two million, three hundred thousand and we still haven't done the land acquisition because we're going to need land when we get down by the Morris Canyon Crossing. So anyway, we sat down, they came back and they said, we can redesign it, eliminate the bridge, do the engineering on the low water crossing versus the bridge. And their fee comes in at a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. So in essence, we're spending money, the same money. I have no other way to say it any better than that. And with that, I would put your questions.
I just want to add that, um, had we gone down, continued to go down the path we were already on, we would have ended up with a project that we couldn't afford to construct. So essentially, if you think about this as seventy percent engineering, we're turning left, we're making a diversion to redesign some of these elements to bring that construction cost back down into where, um, we can afford it. We're also doing this using C dot money. So this hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars comes out of the C dot grant. What essentially happened is we received a grant to do engineering and construction. We got to seventy percent engineering with the money that was allowed. We want to redesign some of these elements to bring the construction cost down. So we're going to pull money out of, further out of the C dot grant to finish that engineering. And then we will look for other grant opportunities to complete construction. Does that clarify maybe what we're doing here? So this is not an additional expenditure from our funding right now, but at some point, Mr. Just is going to bring you, once we finish the design, because we pulled the construction money out, he's going to bring you something called an overmatch and we're going to have to talk about it. We didn't want that to be the first time that council saw it. And has that triggered more questions or was that clarified?
So, um, I suspect this probably falls into the realm of crystal ball questions. Uh, but to the, to the best of your ability, Mr. Just, um, obviously from, from my understanding, this, this is going to extend the project timeline somewhat.
That's correct.
Um, that being said, generally speaking, any, anytime you extend the project deadline, you usually incur costs due to inflationary measure, whatever, um, those items. Has, has that been, has that been a discussion? And if so, is, do we think that that's, uh, would we have containment for that or is, is it a concern?
No, it absolutely going to increase the project deadline. Uh, Jerry, you can jump in. I think it's approximately six more months it's going to take to spend that hundred and forty-nine thousand because you got to go in and it's, it's not a total redesign, but a lot of it is changing.
And I, maybe I didn't make myself clear, but so the six-month extension, is, is that still going to make it, uh, able to happen? able to happen, you mean, our concern about increased costs in that six months, has that been factored in, I guess, as you asked?
I, I'm not sure on that. Obviously, in six months, you lost some inflation. So it'll probably be a little bit increasing.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I think that, you know, we, maybe not unfortunate, fortunately, we have the grant. So it's our, it's our best due diligence effort to spend this grant money in the appropriate manner. I appreciate the effort. If it's possible, can you give at least a high level, or maybe, I'm sorry, is it Jerry?
Yes, Jerry.
The, a high level, and this would be for the public record, a high-level explanation as to what the engineering costs. I mean, I know there's a lot of environmental concerns, land impact concerns. Because, but the question that I hear from people is how in the world is engineering for a simple trail so much? If you could answer that, I would appreciate it.
That's a very good question. So like I said, the bids came back, HG had provided us with a kind of a spreadsheet of all the options. What, these were the options, and it was like five or six different options. And everybody in the development team says, let's go with the pedestrian bridge. It was right at about 2.1 million, so. Everybody was very much surprised when they finally got, actually, we're at ninety percent when the plans came out.
Thank you.
No problem. And we were double our, so Jerry can speak to that. I know there was some issues that were. You wanna take over on that, Jerry? Explain why the project costs got doubled?
Yeah, I think, I'm having troubles hearing you, Bob, and everything, but I'm thinking, I think I'm getting the gist of the question. If I understand correctly, the question is just explanation for the increase in costs for the construction?
Double the cost, that is correct, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah, you have to, there's a couple perspectives on answering the question. One is the original basis for the cost estimate that went into the grant application. And I would call it very conceptual. It was based on what you might typically expect for a trail on a cost-per-mile basis. Then as we found, as we got into the design, that once we had, you know, topography, we knew the terrain, and we actually developed quantities. And the basis of the original design was a certain offset from the trip for the trail away from the roadway. And it was predicated on also avoiding right-of-way acquisition. And as a result of that, because of the terrain and avoiding right-of-way, a lot of walls were required. And that, in great, to a great extent. Once we got to ninety percent, we had our quantities. That resulted in the increase in costs, the more accurate estimate of what the actual costs would be. And it's brought us to this point where then we identified opportunities to refine the scope. Bob alluded to several of them. The other, the other big potential saver in costs is there's two right-of-ways, there in Morris Canyon, that are gonna be impacted. And since they're already gonna be impacted, now we can take advantage of that, and in lieu of a pedestrian bridge, we can go to a low-water crossing. So all these changes in scope will bring that cost closer to that original conceptual estimate. So I think in summary, the original estimate was way low. And now that we've got a much more accurate estimate on the quantities and what it takes. And providing plans that meet CDOT standards, or at least plan standards and specifications. We've got a much more confident estimate of what the actual cost will be.
Mr. Sherman, do you have?
Was the original plan, was that realistic, or were we just shooting a dream scenario out there? Because it sounds like we.
We obviously thought it was very realistic. I think somebody mentioned it, it's basically a glorified sidewalk.
Right.
So, but.
But the doubling, that's.
That blew everybody's mind.
Right. So it seems like someone didn't link up properly with the estimate.
I, I think Jerry said it, I think when they did the cost estimate, it probably wasn't put in enough time and effort.
Gotcha.
To, and didn't know the details. It was assuming a lot of assumptions. When they finally got to the final design drawings, that, you know, the walls and all these other things added up immensely.
Okay, I would love to see a side-by-side of what visually what we're looking at versus cutting some sidewalk here, cutting some asphalt here, getting a little bit of a ridge. I would love to see what that looks like versus what the original plan was, if that's possible, I don't think that's possible.
I think if you could visualize this, the original idea, concept, was to offset the trail. My recollection, Bob, was twenty feet from the road, or something in that neighborhood, to give a little more more comfort for the users of the facility.
Just as a, as an observation, sorry for the interruption, just as an observation, I mean, we've had presentations and work sessions on the trail before. I mean, so that's, that's been discussed.
Just as a visual, to know we're, we're really spending money, or losing money, or would you say we're spending money, we're losing money to make, how do you say that? We're spending money to lose money?
We're spending money to save.
Yes.
We're trying, we're trying to get the project cost.
I wanna.
Trying to get the project cost back down around two million bucks.
Gotcha.
So when they do that, we have to further re-engineer it.
Okay.
So.
On what that really means. If you could, if you could.
Is that something you think you could provide, Jerry? Like maybe a red reach showing the, you know, narrowing the trail from ten to eight?
Yes, Bob, we could provide that. I'm envisioning just a typical section of what the original concept was and what the new concept is. I think you can reflect that in a typical section.
Councilman Thurman, is your desire to see that because you have reservations about the re-engineering? And you'd like to stick with the larger project, the four million?
There's not really reservations, I just wanna see what, how the money stacks up to what we're not getting versus what we're getting. Like, we really had a dream scenario of what we were getting. I wanna know what the, what the rest is.
Until we get into the re-engineering, we really couldn't do a side-by-side.
That's correct. I mean, once we have final, once we have final design drawings for this.
That's also be good, I said it should be able to have the, have the link with my imagination.
What we can do is put together some sort of description in-depth of what will be re-engineering. Would that be acceptable?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Trigell?
Hi, I'm really confused now. So originally, when I thought, it sounds, we kept talking about a sidewalk to sidewalk, like literally just getting a walking path from Saddle Road to Walmart. I don't know where there's any water, and this just sounds weird, because I'm like, did we go to a more extreme design? Or were we staying simplistic on just getting a sidewalk?
I'm sorry, you said you didn't know where any water was?
Yeah, because I'm like, we have to cross Morris Canyon.
It's a dry area, but.
So we're going into the back instead of staying on?
Well, we were gonna cross with a big bridge originally. And now we're gonna do what they call a water crossing. So basically, it'll have a couple culverts, so the nuisance lower in the wintertime when snow's mounting, water will go under the trail. We get that deluge that we had Friday, it'll go over the top. So it's designed, that basically the peak storm will crest over the top. Trail stays in place, and maybe some branches and silt, it gets left on it, we'll have to go through it, clean it off. That only happens once or twice a year when we get an incredibly huge storm like that, so that, but it's a lot cheaper than putting a pedestrian bridge in there, because you got foot lanes, you have the structure itself.
Which makes sense now I know where you're at.
Okay.
Because originally, the way that I understood it, we were just like literally following the highway just for access. And to me, that's a smaller project that was probably way less costly.
And we are.
I don't know how we got into.
We're on the east side of Santa Fe Trail, between the right-of-way fence and the edge of pavement, probably could be real close centered in that area.
Right, yeah, I just, I don't remember how we got to that design from the original conversation, just having a walking path down Santa Fe Trail to Walmart. That's where I'm lost at, I apologize, sir, I didn't know where that developed from.
You're fine.
We're not doing anything for the road, the lighting or anything?
That is correct, we.
Well, do you think it would be smarter to fix the roads and the lighting than to have a trail? How many more people drive on that road than it would walk on a trail?
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Shu, but the grant was, the grant was on the precedent of getting a trail.
But I thought there was an issue too to fix the road and the lighting too.
Jerry, I'm almost positive, this includes lighting, correct?
I do not believe it does, Bob, I don't think we've got lighting as part of the design.
Okay, well. They'll be forthcoming. We do, we know we have to fix the roads.
Yeah, the first night.
Barfield.
Right.
We talked about it. Bobby, if there's a redesign, how will the dimensions change on the trail?
It'll be decreased in size. Originally, the original trail was ten-foot width, we're dropping it to eight-foot width now. And then also, we decided that six inches in thickness, we could decrease it to five inches. Both of those sacred quantities in concrete, which is very expensive. And then the elimination of the pedestrian bridge is a, is a big savings. Around four thousand. We're paying more for less surface area. Well, what we're trying, where we were at before, we're we're four million, three hundred thousand, and we're trying to get it back down to, into the two million dollar range. Okay, that's, but to get back down to that two million dollars, that's why we, we're asking HG to go in and redesign it. To do these cost-saving measures.
So there's another redesign cost as well?
That's what the 140, that's what we're designing, that's what we're doing, 149,000 is. And like Tara said, that's the grants paid for that. Okay, the grants paid for that, okay.
Mr. Just, we've been doing this so long, I don't even remember. Is this supposed to come from Main Street to Saddle Road, or Saddle Road to Walmart? Or is it the whole length, or what is it?
All it is, is it's from Saddle Road to the Holiday Inn. It's about 1.15 miles along Santa Fe Trail.
Originally, I thought we were talking about putting something all the way along there.
There was often tying these trails together, that's correct, but this particular project is just from Saddle Road to Holiday Inn.
That's how I, I just need clarification. Thank you.
And the cost includes land acquisition?
It does not include land acquisition.
I can't believe that 1.25 miles of road is gonna cost 3.8. 2.45 million dollars.
Well, we're hoping it's back down to the two million dollar range.
Which is something we could use the remainder of the CDOT funding for, and then write another grant.
Okay.
Four million's a little out of our pocketbook.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Bob.
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
May I make a comment, please? I know the perception of this project, and this comment isn't intended specifically to anybody on council, to staff. It is a comment in general. This has been going on a significant amount of time, and it does, for those of us that are not intimately involved in it day-to-day, it is easy to forget the specifics and the parameters that we discussed. And anytime you have laypeople, and in effect, that's what we are, we're laypeople. Conceptualize or visualize a project, there's a real uh, you're usually oversimplifying what it's going to take to affect the project. I mean, that's true of almost any project out there. As you develop a project, you have discovered conditions, the more you get, the further along it is. And this is something that I was mentioning, asking about earlier, and I really believe I probably did not make myself clear. But, you know, the question has been, how in the world is engineering so costly? And it goes hand in hand with one of the other reasons that this project has taken so long, is it's it's a state, it's funded by a state grant, correct? There's state regulations, I suspect there's federal regulations. If water is, has, or is expected to run down any dry ditch, that's considered a water crossing. There's studies that have to occur, there's flow expectancies that have to occur, all of those add to the cost, add to the timeline, so I agree, it's very frustrating, it's just the output of this is the way that our system of governance works in the United States. It does, it does lead to frustration, but I just, I want to make the point that the people that have been involved in this day-to-day, I'm certain, have a very clear understanding of what's led to it, that's hard to convey in this, in this bit of time. And I'm, as was evidenced by the water projects earlier. City staff, their primary objective is to spend the best use of dollars, and our, our need up here is to ensure that it happens, but the perspectives are different, but I think, I'm hoping that some of the comments I made have helped clarify in some way, but we appreciate you trying to seek out the best use of these grant dollars that you can.
Any other questions?
So the New York Municipal is still a feasible project?
Sure.
Okay.
We're trying to retool that and make that possible. It absolutely is. Lessons have been learned, we've learned some lessons, but Bob's leadership on this has been solid. We've been looking for solutions. It sat for a while as the city management was changing. We had to pick something back up that had been sitting for months. We've done that, this is the best way forward. We're gonna pull more grant money, we'll probably have to pull more grant money for acquisition. It's gonna keep reducing the money that's there for construction. Hopefully, we get a project we can afford and we'll go for more money. So absolutely, the way to go.
Can I ask a question, sorry, real quick? Shouldn't you have gotten acquisitions first before you decided on?
You have to design and engineer, I'll let Bob answer that, that's his bailiwick.
Yeah.
I, this is, this is turning into a work session.
Okay, so, I just.
It's a prudent question, just letting.
Yeah, so basically, you have to have the design in place, because then it dictates, for instance, there's two properties we're gonna be crossing. One of them, we're gonna be taking, you know, a slice of ground, and know where the toll slope is. We can't figure that out until they have a profile set on the element of the trail. So, but by going to this, I just wanna clarify this, by going to the low-water crossing. The second property, we're probably gonna have to take a little bit more of that property, because we're gonna have to do some switchbacks to get, it's gotta be ADA, the only way you can be ADA is to get the grade down. So we're gonna take, we're gonna probably end up taking that whole parcel from the first one to get down. So just to explain your question.
On the bright side, when you talk about, what is it, a 2.2 million dollar grant from CDOT?
Two million, two hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, yeah. You multiply that, what is the factor seven times? That revenue is gonna be generated within the community in that room, that money is gonna be turned over many times over, so it's not only a project, it's, it's an economic stimulus. And it's, I mean.
It leads to the state park, that's what everybody wants to do, it's gonna be a great project. Trust me, I'm more frustrated than anybody, we're three years into this, and this is where we're at, you know? But that's a big part of CDOT grants.
I understand.
We, we in extraordinary engineering, we went out and did the suit, which was until. We, we in, next door in engineering, we went out and did the suit, which was until, until investigation. We saved the project eighty forty thousand dollars, you know, cause we did it in-house, we've been doing anything we can to help the project, you know? So, you know, that's a credit to my crew in the store.
Alrighty, I need a motion.
Tell them.
I'll second.
Great. Call the vote, please. DeBarno?
Yes.
Shu?
Yeah.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trishell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
And I, yeah, consideration of the amendment to the Arctic Edition contract.
We just got all the fun stuff today.
Why not?
Okay, thanks, Mayor, members of council. So you have in front of you, um, a second amendment to the contract from December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The original contract was to complete the preliminary engineering phase. We have had one amendment, which was done in twenty twenty-four, uh, for twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen to complete project needs assessment by Quantified Ventures. The current request is for a second amendment to the existing contract for the amount of five hundred ninety-nine dollars, nine hundred and fifteen, uh, five hundred ninety-nine, nine hundred and fifteen dollars to complete final design of the project. Uh, we did speak with the attorney about our procurement rules and we did clarify that we can move forward with this amendment. Both Ms. Garrett and Mr. Downs, um, completed this amendment. Um, I would just defer to, uh, Mr. Downs on the one request you had, which was to make sure we owned everything, um, that has been done, and I'll defer to you.
And, and that is correct, that has been, um, we, we have those representations in, um, is, is part of this.
I, I just wanted, uh, for a point of clarity, did, did I miss here the, the price, I think that, I did?
Five ninety-nine, nine fifteen.
That's what it.
Okay, five hundred ninety-nine thousand.
Right.
Yes. Nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna.
No, sorry. And, um, as Mr. Downs indicated, it includes all digital files, the bid package and all filing documents, so we'll open everything.
Ms. Ogletree?
That was only, that was finally concerned, because once this is done, I want us to be able to choose whoever we want to construct the actual, um, Riverwalk project, project, so I'm glad that we took care of that, and I think it's, um, definitely something that's an investment that the city should continue to do, I think it's gonna make a huge difference in a lot of ways, not only in, for the river and use of the river, but also with regard to everything we've been talking about tonight, because we can control, better control where events can happen and gatherings can happen, and then we'll just.
Can you do a poll, maybe you have a question? Oh, Lord.
I'm not worried, yeah.
I think that this is a decision that actually should be passed on, since we only have four more months, the council's gonna make a big change, and they're gonna be stuck with putting the money into the Riverwalk, and many of them may not be happy in doing that.
I would address that.
Well, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's my opinion.
I know, I'll, I'll, I'll answer your question, okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I don't, cause it was all beautifully written out and all our requests have been fulfilled. I just wanna say how much I appreciate staff.
You did have a great job.
Only happy things you said when you told me.
Mr.
New questions? Good.
Your question or new question?
New.
Okay.
Sort of never stays, I was just kidding.
Okay.
So, uh, obviously, this is a really, really big sum of money. Um, uh, I don't wanna take any of the mayor's, uh, talking points, but I definitely wanna get mine in. But, uh, in, in all, in all seriousness, um, Trinidad has long been subject to economies that have a perception at least of being boom, a bust. And I do think, um, that I think we really need to try to diversify Trinidad's economy where they're not, uh, so reliant on single large entities, I mean, going back, it's been, if you look far enough back, it's been sheep ranching, cow ranching, uh, oil, sorry, natural gas, coal mining, um, many, many, you know, large entity, um, agriculture, many large entity, uh, industries that have, that have fueled the economic growth of Trinidad, among the league, it's painful. Uh, so many communities have found ways to revitalize their community with a Riverwalk and, um, it's anecdotal potentially, but I mean, you can find sources that prove that, but we have a confluence of a lot of important things, we have uh, the highway, the river, uh, a city with historic, uh, reference and, um, if, if we can find some way to make that synergy work together, we'll have a great, um, profit potential for, or industry potential going forward, and I mean, you know, m- most of you hearing this tonight, heard my rants on that, so there's no need to, um, go over that. Mr. Shu, I think you make a, a preachable point, I mean, it is a large expenditure of money and potentially should be left to the next council, and alternatively, I think that it's such an important decision that I think it should be made to help commit Trinidad to, um, to seeing that outgrowth and to see, uh, potential increase of, uh, future. But, um, I, I definitely respect your opinion, but I, I think that it's something that we should move forward on.
Well, I don't respect your opinion. I'm just a little.
Don't make him mad.
I'm scared to be, I'm just kidding, it's been a long evening and we need, we need a little.
Make your speech short, please.
Okay, so, I, we're getting kind of punchy basically here, so, let me make a couple of points, because I can't, you and I have been on this from the get-go, so the, the money that we've made, eight hundred and, YouTube?
Yeah.
Okay, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars were, was spent on the conceptual design, this money, which is also, but, which is already budgeted, for five ninety-nine, nine fifteen, is to present to GOCO in next year. But you have to have what is, I'm understanding, is just shovel-ready project. They will not, am I correct? Please, tell correctly if I'm wrong.
I'll stay silent then. It's been a long night.
Yes, it has, but anyway, um, to Mr. Shu's point, if we save, if we wait until the next council will have a vote on that, that is in January, and basically the project dies. Because the, 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 um, preliminary engineering for the grant will not be completed in time for that, um, grant.
GOCO is not holding a century grant round next year. They will, GOCO is not, they've decided recently, in the past few weeks, to not hold a century grant round next year.
Okay.
And they will be having a community impact grant, we hope we can apply to.
And how much is that one?
They have not released the details on what that would look like.
But needless to say, it was priority that we listed, and it was the first priority, so. That's all I have to say.
Mayor, may I make one very short comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, um, Ms., Ms. Marshall, I, I appreciate your professionalism, we're, we're very glad to have you as our city manager. Uh, would, would you disagree with this comment? And if you do disagree, then I, I will, um, you know, obviously, your, your professional opinion very much matters, but when, when you are approaching large-scale grants.
Sure.
Having a, what would amount to a shovel-ready project.
Generally more attractive.
Generally more attractive, correct, so I still think it's incumbent on us to, to step out and move forward for the city of Trinidad with something, that even if, um, it's two years down the line, three years down the line, whoever is lucky enough to be the city manager at city council at that point can pull out from dusty archives, a stack of paper, quite literally this deep, and say, "We have a grant ready to help a large population in impoverished southern Colorado, here it is," so.
I think the more relevant point is we need to own what we've already invested in.
Correct, that's what, I was pulling a dusty stack of papers, um, but anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, I need a motion.
So.
This is Aaron, second.
Second.
Aaron and Aaron, call the vote, please. DeBarno?
Yes.
Shu?
No, I have to stay in front.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whisper, spring first, okay.
Sure. I, I'm, I'm vote against it only for, I'm, I'm not against the project, but I vote that I think the council that's coming should have some say in that, because they're gonna be the ones dealing with it the most.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trishell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes. Item ten, refused by city manager and the city of China. Okay.
You can forego it, you know? Forego, no, do not, do not forego it.
Um, thank you to the police, fire and public works departments who worked during the Labor Day parade yesterday.
Yes.
You attended, it was quite a, a show, I was really proud of our, um, our boys in blue and our boys in red, um, we have three finalists for the police chief position who will be holding interviews on Thursday and Friday, September eighteenth and nineteenth, so, looking forward to that process. The planning department is in the process of requesting funding for History Colorado. We'll complete a historic structural assessment for the Carnegie Library Building. This is a non-competitive grant, it doesn't require a match. We're excited to be, uh, in line for this, that'll be, this'll be the first of several historic buildings. In case you don't know, a historic structural assessment is done by a historic architect, an engineer. It usually lays out the plan for how you're going to approach preservation and structural stability in the buildings, once again, no cost, so, does not require match. I had an opportunity to visit the city's water plant, water treatment plants, spend the day with Mr. Viall and Mr. Ramirez, discussing our water system, I'm very excited about this master plan you authorized tonight. One of the things that we talked about in our water system is the lack of redundancies and how, um, actually creating redundancies is then our gift to the next generation as, as the previous generation has gifted us with our, our wonderful, uh, water stability. We'll be bringing, um, to you in the next council meeting, uh, one of Mr. Ramirez's projects. You may remember he spoke to you about it at a work session, the expansion of water storage at Monument Lake, uh, what that will do for our, uh, certificates and how that will stabilize our water rights, so we'll be bringing you phase one of the phase two project. Uh, we'll also be bringing you quotes for the purchase of a new control panel at the wastewater treatment plant. You may remember that you upgraded the centrifuges there last year. What we didn't do is upgrade the control panel that, um, controls the centrifuges. Now, we had quite a bit of capital outlet, you may remember, we bought a new vac truck, and that vac truck came in about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than we were expecting, so this control panel is going to be, uh, our ability to use the rest of our capital outlet. And by the way, the vac truck's here, it's pretty cool. So, um, it has arrived, and Mr. Just, who, who just left, is taking possession of the old vac truck, which will be used in our, um, surface water drainage channels. I'm also engaged with the two fifty, one fifty, one fifty organization in Trinidad that's coordinating Trinidad celebrations with, uh, folks up north who are doing both state and national planning. Our finance manager Sarah Cart and our utility billing manager Sheila Duran are both now on the job as of today and spent the day getting set up in their new offices, so we're excited about that. Um, we have two firefighters on site in Cortez for the Stoner Mesa. Stoner Mesa Fire, we're expecting to home on Thursday. Just always wanna remind you that that's become a really advantageous revenue stream for our general fund. Um, as we often, um, not only do they get paid for their work there, but we get paid back though for the overtime for those that are left here to work those shifts. We're planning to move forward with an MOU for health solutions from our co-responder position, and we'll be bringing this in a work session in the next month or so, uh, with some, some data on how fantastic that's worked out. We wanna thank, uh, Detective Ginley, Detective Sergeant Ginley in the audience who spearheaded the original grant for this position, we, I can't wait for you to hear some other, some of the data that's coming out of that. We're also working with Trinidad Community Foundation, they've secured a hundred thousand for peer-to-peer counseling. Um, we'll partner with the Los Enemas County Sheriff's Office and the Trinidad Police Department on how to best implement that peer-to-peer counseling and use that funding. We're also gonna be bringing you a potential partnership with Los Enemas County for new detox facilities. So those are the things that are coming up in late September and October on work sessions. We started union negotiations this week, uh, Mr. Downs will be joining me this year. Budget is progressing with revenue projections, which are in, and, uh, we're gonna be talking with departmental representatives about their requests in the next few weeks. Last time I reported that health insurance would increase seventeen percent, we are figuring that into all of our budget figures. I'm also happy to report, Ms. Garrett let me know today that we will actually see a slight decrease from SARS this year. So my notes say yay.
Yay.
That's not, that's not easy.
Uh, that's, that's fabulous, actually. Um, thank you for the discussion of lodging tax at this last work session. Um, Mr. Downs, Ms. Garrett and I will start talking about options for a new ordinance later this week, we'll probably bring that toward the end of the month. Um, I attended the coalition for the in-house meeting this past week, and I see several openings to work with them to support some funding that they can get through their nonprofits, uh, partners like Keep Trinidad Safe. I think as the city and county in supporting those grants, through support letters and other things, uh, we can participate in some solutions that they're looking at, so excited about that. I was happy to attend the ARBA meeting with Linda Viall and Councilmember Shu. Um, we held the first of a new monthly meeting between all the departments that are involved in events that are held both in public spaces and city facilities, so we're looking at how to pull together all those events in a way that would be easily digestible for council, so you know what's going on at the library at Space Degree, at the Welcome Center, at the animal shelter, and through special event permits all in one place. Um, I also wanna say lastly that we received one, uh, response to our RFP for the golf course. We felt like we needed some additional information from them, so we've asked that they complete a business and operational plan so we can evaluate their feasibility. And then, I don't wanna be on the nose, but I, I did have in my notes to update you on that work session. We held on July twenty-first regarding the safety and maintenance of public spaces. As you know, we passed an ordinance tonight that was recommended by staff, um, Public Works has continued to remove urban campgrounds, we've seen an uptick in the police patrols within our public spaces, new cameras have been ordered, that was one thing that was discussed. The signs will be coming in and they'll go, you'll see them in the parks, and the Riverwalk shortly. Of course, all the tables were immediately removed, and we'll be assessing lighting next. So those were the follow-up items from that work session, and we appreciate your patience while I did my work.
Thank you, too.
I think the last thing, and Les is gonna touch on the election, but we are planning to hold a candidate orientation. We've never done this before, on September twelfth at one thirty P M. I don't expect that to be a public meeting, we don't, we don't have more than one council member that will be attending that as a, as a new candidate, so that's a good segue for you.
It is. It's a very good segue, thank you. Mayor, may I seize on the segue?
Yes, please.
May be recognized, thank you. So, um, as Sarah said, I do have some election information for all of you, that is, to give you the names of the people who uh, filed their petitions in a timely fashion, and petitions still more legally valid, and, and now have them on. still more legally valid, and now have them on the ballot. The names are, the two candidates for mayor, and I'm reading these in the order that they are on my list, are Manny Manuel Trillo and Sid Michaels. So those are the two candidates for mayor. We have seven candidates for city council. They are Carmella Vanor, Tim Peters, Michael Yocum, am I going too fast? Okay, I'm sorry. Carmella Vanor, Tim Peters, Michael Yocum, Thomas Kosovich, Dan Rosetti. Mr. Rosetti, good evening. Eric Treider, T-R-E-I-D-E-R, and Linda Velazquez. Did you get all those? Okay. Tomorrow, we will be having the random drawing to decide the order in which the names will appear on the ballot. So that will be done tomorrow, and we will have the order of the candidates for ballot, after that is done. Any questions on that?
We'll be using the bingo machine again.
Bingo, yes.
You have to yell out B-I-N-G.
Yeah, that's great.
That's right, yeah, exactly, that's absolutely right. And, I'm sorry. Okay. Your sign audibly, I understand. Not at all, not at all, I understand. So just, I know it's late, it's been a long meeting, but I just want to say a few things about my good friend Anthony Matei, and I would be derelict in my duties if I could not do that. I want to say that I hate the thought of a world without Anthony. He was a wonderful person, a huge personality with a command presence, and he was really a bit of a moral authority. And I don't mean that in the pejorative sense, he was simply a moral authority. He had a really strong sense of right and wrong. I think because of his upbringing, his many years on the state patrol, he really had a strong sense of what was right and what was wrong. I usually tell people it's good to have gray areas, and not always perceive something as absolutely right or absolutely wrong, but he did. And there was right, and there was wrong. And Anthony always made his feelings known. And one of the, one of the greatest things about him, one of his greatest attributes was, he wanted everyone to be treated with respect. And he would lose his mind if he felt like he was being disrespected so badly, or if anybody else was being disrespected. He would rally to their defense, and he would get extremely angry if he perceived someone is disrespecting somebody else. And I want to tell you, they were very exciting times on city council, when we had Joe Riora, Joe Binotto, and Anthony Matei on council. Three pretty strong-willed, strong-headed, you know, Italian guys, not that they're, you know, racial, but, you know, their ethnicity is relevant, but they were strong personalities. There were times, literally, that I thought we were going to be breaking up fights on the days, because they would get so mad at each other. Just a few Anthony-isms to give you a sense of Anthony. He liked to tell the chief of police at the time, Charo Corioso, "I would charge hell with a thimble full of water for you, chief." He said, he once told a guy who was here, who shall remain nameless, a guy who was here who wasn't really very respectful, he was chewing gum, he had a ball cap on, and he was just sitting here, and Anthony told the guy, he just kind of interrupted him stone cold, and said, "The next words out of your mouth better be, 'I'm sorry.'" And they were, they were, yeah. I know that sounds disrespectful, but it was deserved, it was appropriate. And Anthony wouldn't have done that if it wasn't appropriate. He would always tell me before my city attorney evaluation, for about a month before the evaluation, he would say, "Don't buy anything on credit, Danos." Then right before, right before the evaluation, we would take a break, you know, during the executive session, he would say, "Give your soul to God, because your carcass is gonna be mine." He didn't use the word carcass. I just want to say, and kind of, you know, conclude by saying, when Anthony was retired from the state patrol and he was working security at the courthouse, so I saw him all the time, and he loved to make my life difficult. So I would, you know, be at the courthouse, be working security, I would see somebody at, you know, saying the foyer of the courthouse, I'd see like Sean Bazinelli, God rest her soul, and I would hug Sean, and he would see that, and he'd hold up a jar of hand sanitizer and say, "You're gonna wanna use a lot of this." And just the last thing, we had this bet, and I'm sorry, I know it's been a long night, but an ongoing Bronco bet. And the time before the council meeting, we would bet on the game, and if the Broncos won, I had to fly these awful Bronco flags from my car for that week. But if the team played the Broncos won, he had to wear the jersey of that team to the council meeting. And so one of the reasons why that was important was because he hated that. And I know in my phone, I have pictures of Anthony wearing Rob Gronkowski, Howie Long, Jamal Charles, so I can appreciate, all these jerseys of these other teams to the council meeting. But one of the reasons why I was able to buy all these jerseys for him to wear was because Councilman DeBono had a kiosk, he wore some jerseys at a disco, so he enabled my insanity. And I now have, there were thirty-two teams in the NFL, I have thirty-one team jerseys, I got them all except the Broncos, so that Anthony would have to wear them all, so I could wear them. Anyway, but he would wear those, and those were great times. Anthony was a wonderful man, and just a great guy, and I'm just so sorry for his loss. I wish you all could have known him really well.
Do you know that four months ago today, he was sitting in Councilman Williams's seat? He came to do police chief interviews for us.
And he was...
He was here on May second.
He was incredibly honored that you had asked him, because, yeah, he was just such a great guy. Yeah, anyway, thank you for...
Okay, item eleven, executive session for purpose of determining position relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section one-four dash six, dash four oh two, dash forty, union negotiations. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Sold.
There we go, some move, is there a second? Thurman seconded, call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yeah.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griege?